You're ready. We're live. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 15, 2020 School Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our birthday girl, Angela Cutbill, to lead us in the flag salute, please. Everyone, stand.
Hand over heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I do have a report out of closed session. In a vote of five to zero, the Board of Education voted to uphold the Level Two. With that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Someone moved?
So.
Okay, so Mrs. Cutbill moved, and who seconded? Mr. Lawrence seconded. Welcome, Noah. And at this point, Noah, do you approve the agenda? I need a student vote.
I approve of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Board, all those in favor of tonight's agenda?
Aye.
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 Aye. That is four zero. Mrs. Kimmel. Ms. Kimmel. Okay. And then I need a motion to approve minutes from September 1st. Oh, my God, there's.
I move we approve September 1st minutes.
Second.
Okay, so did you get that, Ms. Kimmel? Great. Student, do you approve of the minutes?
I approve.
Board, all those in favor of approving tonight's minutes? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence? Okay.
I said aye.
Okay. Four zero. Okay, and at this point, we have a very special staff board communication. Dr. Stepanowski.
Madam President, members of the boards, we are very excited to share that we, for the first time ever in our global pandemic, we have classified and certified Employees of the Month. Woo! This is like the best attended board meeting we've ever had. It's awesome. It's not true that we have to give out awards to get people to show up. It's not true.
Have a canine member.
We do. We appreciate the dogs hyping as well. Very excited to celebrate our amazing staff, challenging times, and we love and appreciate when we rise up and some of our staff lead that way, so we have our classified certificate staff to recognize tonight. Mr. Seifert.
Madam President, members of the board, it's Dr. Step, share. We are so excited to be here tonight for our first ever Employees during the Employees of the Month during the virtual learning era and our first Employees of the Month in September. And considering, is that a dog in the background? We've got dogs, we've got pets at the board meeting, what more could you ask for? And considering these employees of USD has thoughtfully established guiding principles that are the foundation of exceptional character within our employees. These principles range from adaptability, compassion, initiative, and perseverance. Of USD also considers the dispositions that are inherent in the district's foundational initiative of Student 360. These include having empathy and understanding, building a collaborative community among students and staff, as well as operating with a positive mindset. And considering these two employees, we referenced it in jest earlier, but I really believe that there's something special about being recognized as Employees of the Month under the challenging circumstances of COVID-19. All of us and all of our employees have been asked to transform the way that we do education, you know, no script, there's no playbook, and we're all just doing the best we can for kids, given the challenging circumstances. These employees have been exceptional and adapted into this new environment, and they have earned this honor by going above and beyond, and they've been able to thrive in the virtual learning era. Without any further ado, we'd love to introduce Dr. Mike Roberts to talk a little bit about our classified Employee of the Month. And then after Dr. Mike Roberts, we're going to introduce President Stein to congratulate her as well. Dr. Mike?
Good evening, board. Thank you for having me here this evening. I get the great honor of introducing Mary Jo Ammon. The unique thing about this is she's probably one of the main classified staff that doesn't need a formal introduction because I think everybody knows Mary Jo because of everything that she does. But getting to talk to her a little bit today, got to learn a little bit of history about her, but she started here over 20 years ago with her kids attending AE Wright, and that started to build her relationship with this campus and our community. From there, she was a PFC president at AE Wright for four years, helping get the parents together and lead in some great capacity there. And during that time, she volunteered in multiple capacities across the district. Wherever she was needed, she was there willing to help, and that over 20 years ago has not changed today. Starting in 2004, she started taking over the media center at AE Wright, and if you walk in there now, it'd be a perfect image of part of what Mary Jo encompasses a board, welcoming, inviting place for students to come in and be part of it with surfboards on the wall, inviting followers on an outside wall to sit there and read books, just to be part of a culture where kids want to come in. When I came here last year, I was amazed at the number of students that spent so much time and hours inside that media center, but that was part of Mary Jo's vision to get kids inside there. Fast forward to this year, the start of the 2020, the COVID, start of the school year, Mary Jo, like many others, rose above the top and spent countless hours and time helping barcode books and getting stuff ready for the book pickups for our students, even though it was not a normal time here. She came in, she worked, she did everything, she never flinged, she just stepped up and did the job. Once that got done, she jumped in and immediately helped with the tech support. The tech support was down with so many requests, and she said, hey, I'm here, let me help, let me volunteer my school site to help get these parents and students back up and running. That is just the true color of what Mary Jo is about, and that was why we wanted to recognize her as a classified Employee of the Month. She is fantastic, she is awesome, she is just a great part of the AE Wright family, as you can see by the many AE Wright family here, ready to celebrate her at the moment. And I just want to say for myself, congratulations, Mary Jo, very proud of you, and extremely happy that you're part of our campus.
And thank you, Dr. Roberts. Mary Jo Ammon, who? Mary Jo Ammon, as Dr. Roberts said, has been a wonderful, not only a wonderful exemplary employee, but a longtime volunteer, and many of us on the board have had the opportunity to work with her in our volunteer days, years, and visit her and see her in action at the AE Wright Media Center. Mrs. Ammon takes great pride. If you haven't been over there, for those of you on the screen or out there in TV land, it is a wonderfully inviting media center that is constantly evolving with student art, and Mrs. Ammon takes great pride in everything she does, and wherever, whatever anybody needs anything or whatever's needed at the school site, Mary Jo always jumps in, and we are delighted tonight. Mary Jo, can you see? I have an apple for you. To present you with the apple, and it says Employee of the Month, Mary Jo Ammon, in appreciation for exemplary service to students and staff, September 2020. We couldn't be more proud of you, Mary Jo. Thank you for being part of our family. And welcome to the Ammon family, who we also know and love as former students in our district. Hopefully, we'll get some of those babies back in our district. And Mrs. Ammon, I turn it over to you.
Boy, this is fun. Thank you for this recognition, and while it isn't necessary, it is very much appreciated. I would like to challenge all of you to take the time to recognize or thank others, especially during these challenging times. To cabinet and board members, do you take the time to thank our site admins? I don't know how often they get a pat on the back. They deserve it. Thanks, Mike and Gia, for all the positive changes that you've made at AE Wright. Twenty-six years ago, almost to the day, our family moved down from San Mateo on a Sunday and started school at Round Meadow on Monday. Within the month, I was elected School Site Council, and that began my career at LVUSD. I am so thankful to this district for providing not only a great education for my three sons, but also helping to instill in them a wonderful sense of hard work and commitment. Thank you to our PFCs. We are a community that values our school libraries. Our PFCs are committed to keeping them open. Our media centers aren't just about books and ASERs. They are the student unions of our campuses. From reading gardens to makerspace to cafe tables, we provide a safe, comfortable, welcoming place for students to gather, socialize, and enjoy real face time. I love my AE Wright family. Everyone knows what a special place AE Wright is. It's a pleasure to come to work with people that really care about kids and really care about each other. Thank you to our amazing library team and our always positive leader, Tina Johnson. Our libraries are now called media centers. With that new name came a host of new duties. I'm honored to work alongside a committed group of women who have repeatedly stepped up to take on new challenges in our ever-changing job description. A big part of our new responsibilities are tech-related, and I'm proud of what we have accomplished with the district tech team. When we started with the Forward One-to-One Learning Program, who could have imagined that we wouldn't just be checking out ASERs, we'd be servicing them? I see the look of surprise in my son's faces when I start talking about BIOS and Uber Mix updates. I need to give a special shout out to Derek and Mitchell. They have had endless patience in teaching a couple of mature librarians how to open up a laptop and replace parts. They are the best, and Anna and I are so thankful for all that they've taught us. Speaking of Anna, Ms. Anna DeRosa-Koo should be here on the screen with me. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't still be working at AE Wright. She is a great teammate. She's always ready to accept new challenges. She takes pride in her work and gives countless hours of her own time. Love you, Anna. Lastly, thank you to my handsome, loving husband and my boys and their wives. They understand that I have a very hard time saying no. I'm always ready for a challenge, and I'm usually enlisting their help to get the job done. And I can't forget to send my love to Addison and Austin, my beautiful grandchildren, who are always the highlight of my week. If we were all together in the boardroom, they would have completely upstaged me because they're so adorable. Luckily, some of you got a little glimpse of them on the screen. Thank you so much for this recognition, and I'm so proud to be part of the LVUSD team.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
And Madam President, my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Tiffany Reynolds, Willow Principal, who will share a little bit about our certified Employee of the Month, Ms. Melissa Carter.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Stepanowski, and distinguished cabinet. It is my honor to present our certified Employee of the Month, Melissa Carter. Melissa Carter is a first-grade teacher in our Virtual Academy, and she stepped into this new role with enthusiasm and grace. When you visit her virtual classroom on Zoom, you see a sea of smiling first-grade faces, and she is just a model of what a teacher should be. She is enthusiastic, she's patient, she has hands-on activities while they're on Zoom. They're on there, but you see them working and doing their thing and looking up to check in with their teacher. It's just amazing to watch. And Mrs. Carter is also a tech mentor and a big support to her fellow teachers. And, you know, I could go on and on about why she is so deserving of this award, because she definitely is, but I think the best people to tell you about her are actually her students. So I'm ready to hand it over to them now.
We've been having technical difficulties all evening. Welcome to, so if you could, you could see these adorable children, but we're missing the sound.
Well, those are her students, and they really do have wonderful things to tell you about, Mrs. Carter. So I'm glad that you got a chance to see them, and congratulations to Mrs. Carter.
Mr. Klein, do you think you can get the sound back on? If you can do it, we're going to play it. And will you also make sure that you send it, the link to Melissa Carter, so she can enjoy it at her home? So we're going to give it one more try, Melissa, so hang in there with us. No? Okay. Like I said, I apologize.
Send it to all of us?
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Klein, can you send us all the link? Like, everybody who's everywhere, the link, because the boy, were those just not the cutest children ever? So, Melissa.
You're a wonderful teacher.
Oh, here we go. Here we go.
For being the Teacher of the Month. Happy Award Day. I made you a little picture. I like when Mrs. Carter puts on music and can have a little break to write.
You're the best teacher ever. You're a really good teacher because every time when we do good on our work, you always say we do a good job.
We're so proud of you, Mrs. Carter. I'm so happy to be in your class.
That's it? Okay. So we saw the adorable students first, and then, second, we got to hear them without seeing them. So thank you, Mr. Klein. You've been our wonderful Magaiver today. So Melissa Carter, wow. You teach our cuties, little first graders who haven't been in school that long, and welcome to a pandemic in first grade that they have to now learn virtually. And what a talent you have, and you're committed and creative and devoted to your students, and they are thrilled and thriving. Clearly, they are thriving with you as their teacher. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you more so than ever, because it is teaching virtually is no easy feat. So thank you. And again, oops, we have an apple. Can you see the apple to present to you? The district will get it to you. And it says Employee of the Month, Melissa Carter, in appreciation for exemplary service to students and staff, September 2020. And we can't thank you enough. We're going to applaud, and then we're going to let you speak, okay? So yay! So share a few words with us, and if you have family there on the Zoom, please introduce them to us.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Stepanowski. Thank you all for this special recognition. I'm not sure of the exact moment I knew I wanted to be a teacher, but this past week, when my proud mom shared the name of this award on her Facebook, a number of people congratulated me, including my kindergarten teacher. I remember her singing about Astro and the letter we were going to learn about. I remember Teddy Bear picnic, but I mostly remember her love and hug. I was lucky enough to have a number of special teachers throughout elementary school that I still remember today. That is why I became a teacher, so my students could experience those same feelings of being safe and loved. Teaching is one of the greatest gifts I was given, and that gift has only grown because of the people around me. My supportive husband, who puts up with my long nights of planning and the hours he spends cutting things to help me prep. My two little kids, who have had a close view of mommy's other kids these past six months, and every morning tell me to have a good day and have fun teaching kids. To the family friends that welcomed me into their classrooms when I was just starting school to be a teacher. To the Willow teachers and staff, past and present, Willow is a special family that has always been there to help me grow. I know I can reach out to anyone there for support and guidance. Teachers today have never been more exhausted, worked with so many unfutile, or been challenged daily to a job they love. But that being said, they have also never been more determined, more collaborative, or more willing to go that extra mile for the students that they love. I am proud to be a teacher, and thanks to my home in Las Virginas. I want to share a quote by John Wooden, who I find very inspirational in his leadership. Things turn out the best for people who make the best of the way things turn out. Thank you, Dr. Stepanowski, and the cabinet for this recognition. I'm truly grateful and honored.
Wonderful.
Congrats to both of you. You are everything that is wonderful and special about Las Virginas. You have certainly personally helped lift me up tonight. I am inspired to work beside you. You are amazing. And we have one more team to recognize. This team has been hard at it, as has everyone. The moment we shut down, they never shut down. This is our amazing child nutrition team. I am so proud. There are times when things are challenging and difficult and complex, but doing the right thing is easy to see, and that was keeping our food services department open, available to all, all summer long. And they had a six-month run of service. They provided just under 30,000 breakfasts and an additional 30,000 lunches for a total of 59,458 total meals provided. Some districts shut down, some were concerned, we did not. We rose to the occasion, and I couldn't be more thankful of our dedicated child nutrition staff. Ms. Kimmel.
Thank you, Dr. Stepanowski. I am thrilled that we get to do a shout out and formally honor this team that worked so hard since March to continue serving our students. I have a few little pictures to share out, courtesy of Kathy Soleimani's birthday celebration with the team. Who are these masked crusaders? They are our child nutrition, oh, our child nutrition heroes. I am so grateful for the service that they've provided for the last six months. It's crazy that it's been this long, and they did not miss a day, they did not miss a beat. This is them before we had to formally mask up, so you can see their beautiful smiles and how much they love their work. And I am just so appreciative. They served over 117,000 meals to our community. Just amazing, amazing work. So at this juncture, I want to do a formal shout out to Fabiola Torres, Nikki Gluck, Castane Ferguson, Sylvie Sarkis, Lori Crane, Kathy Soleimani, and Waleska Cannon. And I'd like to turn it over to President Stein for a few words and to share the beautiful recognition we have for each of them.
So, Mr. Klein, is it possible to get them all on the screen so we can, we would like them to raise their hands so we can know who they are? Is Waleska there?
Waleska, I believe, I thought that she was on there. There she is. Yeah, she's right in the middle.
This is, this is, you ladies have performed a great service at a time of a pandemic, and if you can raise your hands, if you can come on video if possible, raise your hands so we can see exactly who you are, because we want to recognize each one of you for the contributions that you've done. A pandemic is unprecedented, and because of the pandemic, the economy was hit very hard, which hurt many of our families. And from the beginning through the summer to now, you have continued to feed people, and there's nothing more important than making sure that our students and their families have nutritious food. You can't even learn unless your stomach is full, right? So thank you for being there every day, and you all are, each one of you is going to get a beautiful proclamation from the district, and I'm going to read a few lines, not all of it, but I'm going to read a few lines that really encompass who you are. Despite the closures of all Las Virginas Unified School District schools, our child nutrition heroes ensured that our food services program continued to meet the critical needs of our community. And while many people stayed home, our child nutrition heroes continued to come to work each and every day to ensure our most vulnerable population, our students, received their much-needed meals. And our child nutrition heroes served more than 117,000 meals. I'm going to repeat that. 117,000 meals from March through August, and did so with care, sincerity, and selflessness, exemplifying an extraordinary work ethic. And be it resolved, that Las Virginas Unified School District is proud to recognize all of you wonderful ladies for your dedication to our students and their families. You all are truly, truly heroes, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Yay! Thank you. Ms. Cannon, Mrs. Cannon, do you want to say a few words on behalf of your team? Where did she go?
Did we lose Waleska?
Dr. Cannon, Dr. Cannon, where are you?
I think she's in the black box there.
Oh, here she is. Dr. Cannon, do you want to say a few words on behalf of your team? You need your volume on. You're on mute, I think. Waleska, are you on mute? You have to unmute your, oh, here we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for recognizing our team. I had a team of managers that we didn't even know what was going on. One day, we were all in school, the next day, we were all alone serving meals, and they never said no, or they never said we're in danger. They just came to work, and what did we do today? And my managers, they do not have, I mean, they did not have a summer break. They worked all the way through, and they're still doing it. They're still in the cafeterias. If you drop by the secondary schools, there's our team. So it's, I do have an amazing team, and I'm really glad that this recognition is taking place. They're real heroes. Thank you so much.
Aw, thank you all. One last round of applause for our food services heroes. Thank you. Dr. Stepanowski, with that.
Turn it over to board communication?
Yep, yep, okay. With that, we're going to turn it over to board communication, and I'm going to welcome our Calabasas High School student board rep, Noah Murray. Welcome to your first official board meeting, and do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Madam President, members of the board and cabinet, thank you for having me tonight. Jake Goodman and I are continuing to plan the 2020 Virtual School Board Candidate Forum. At Calabasas, we will be having our freshman elections on October 1st, and then at Agora, they're having their first virtual Spirit Week this week.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
Uh, yes.
Got great. Mr. Lawrence?
I'll be brief. I know we're running a little bit late. I have a couple of quick things. It's been a pleasure to attend some of the back-to-school nights the last couple of weeks. Really touching to see just, you know, even in this virtual world, how we're keeping that connection going. I think I would share what I've shared in the past with parent with kids in the school this semester. It's just amazing to see how our teachers have rallied and the bright smile that are brought to faces. I think I shared on one of my back-to-school nights, one of my favorite, probably my favorite moment of each morning is when I walk by and see my first-grade son, who's not very technically inclined, he doesn't really love distance learning. It's a challenging environment for any six-year-old to try to do it. But when he is greeted by his teacher with the world's biggest smile that literally lights up the entire living room that his desk is sitting in, you can tell that she is just giving all that she can to make it just an extraordinary day for our kid, and it's, and that smile is there every day. I think we're at day, whatever we're at, day 25 now, and it hasn't diminished once. And I know that that's happening in countless rooms and countless living rooms. And I know that that's happening in countless Zooms and countless living rooms across our district every day. And it just is incredibly touching to see that. I think I also shared one of our back-to-school nights, another favorite example of mine, just how innovative our teachers are becoming. My daughter attends E. Wright and the music teacher there, the chorus teacher that my daughter has, is just amazing and how he has managed to, Ms. Proctor, how he's managed to change, just really how he thinks about teaching something that was never meant to be taught via Zoom and getting kids engaged. I hear them, you know, doing their me-me-ma-mos and all those things together in the morning as they're practicing and then their breakout sessions. She's running down and printing and learning to read music and doesn't feel like, I've not had the conversation with her where she feels like she's somehow missing out. She was very excited to be in chorus because she wants to be a singer. And it was one of her big things she was excited about from middle school. And we have a teacher here who has really risen above a beyond and found a way to deliver that. As I said, I know that these are just two anecdotal examples of what's happening every day in our classrooms and in our living rooms across the district. I'm just so very grateful for that and look forward to helping our teachers, our students get back in the classroom as soon as it's safe and possible.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Mingus.
Thank you very much. I've been attending several back-to-school nights as well and was able to attend a couple of PFC meetings, PFA meetings. And it's nice to be able to, even though they're virtual, it's nice to be able to see people and put faces with names. And I also attended the Pure Water Project grand opening for the Las Verginas Municipal Water District this past Friday. And it was very interesting to see how they've come full circle and trying to be very eco-friendly with water and making it pure and drinkable again.
You know, I just want to mention one more thing. I want to give you a shot, if I could, as I mentioned earlier, for something that we did as a district the last 24 hours. So that was very impressive sign of local government. But I wanted to give you kudos for pulling all these people together. You know, we've been having challenges with SoCal Edison shutting off power throughout our school district for scheduled power outage and maintenance and not recognizing that when they shut off power at nine o'clock in the morning, they're shutting off our schools. And we raised this issue, Ms. Stein and I. But Ms. Stein was able to help organize, along with Dr. Stepanowski and the team, a great kind of five, you know, elected official. We had the four mayors of our cities, Hidden Hills, Westlake, Agoura, and Calabasas. We had Senator Henry Stern. And Ms. Stein and I joined for a meeting where we really got a commitment from the SoCal Edison team to recognize that we're in a new reality and they can't be shutting off our power for scheduled maintenance during the school day. We may still have emergencies, but it has to happen, but a real good sign of local government. But I was, I was really kind of impressed by when I sat back and saw that Zoom meeting and saw, you know, our four mayors, our senator, SoCal Edison, our superintendent, our school board president, myself, solving a problem in a way that frankly probably would have been harder to do before Zoom. But, you know, we've managed to facilitate it. So I wanted to thank you for bringing that together. And I think you'll actually have a demonstrable improvement for our students.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wasserman.
Thank you, yes. And I think all of us spoke with city representatives, not just about that issue. And regarding that, I heard back today from City of Hidden Hills about how, you know, I think the clarity of that meeting, because we had attended some other things with Senator Stern and Southern California Electric, was that we weren't talking about turning the power off to schools. We were talking about specifically to parents at home and to home sites where people are distance learning. So, and along those lines, I think we've become an active voice as a board in advocating for the county to review our waiver process. And we have seen some obstacles to that, that we have been addressing both ourselves as a board as well as with community advocacy as well, which I think is really important, that we are able to demonstrate that we can meet the guidelines from the state and that our local numbers are working towards getting students back to campus. And we know that that's really important. And at the same time, we want it to be done well and safely. And are we discussing tonight what we've done in terms of the school setup specifically?
Yes, that's on, that's on the information item that we continue to have every meeting on the 2020 opening.
So, you know, I just think that this is a really important thing, that we're rallying the voices of our community to this in, but still being very safe and thoughtful about it, how much preparation has gone towards that. And that we still have an option for families who have chosen our virtual academy, who, you know, feel like regardless of where we are, if we're coming back to school, that that's something they didn't want. And I'm very proud that as a district, our Cabinet, our administrators, have been working very hard to have this. And the feedback from the community has been really terrific. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cupwell.
I just, Mrs. Wasserman is very diplomatic. And I might be a little less diplomatic if I could for a few seconds.
Mr. Lawrence, we'll cover this. Mr. Lawrence, I hate to say it, but you have had your turn. So we're going to move on and I will cover it in my staff board communication. And I will be very, very candid and direct. Just you wait. I think we're on the same page. So I'm going to ask Ms. Cupwell.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very brief. I want to echo our acknowledgement, our recognitions tonight. Waleska and her team of food service, that has made me so very proud to be a part of this district, what they have done. And Melissa Carter and Mary Jo Ammon are, to me, they exemplify those staff members that you see when you're at their school sites, how happy kids are to see them, how much they are loved, that they are the brightest, I'm going to get emotional, corner in the room. And they bring something special every day and they touch the lives of our kids. And it is so uplifting at a time when everything seems just really smoke in the air and chaos and everybody's in a bit of a funk, that we acknowledge these two staff members and our food service people tonight is so positive and so uplifting to me and reminds me of the heart that's in our district. So it was very nice and I appreciate them and all they do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm crying. Okay, so my staff work communication. Thank you, Mrs. Wasserman. And Mr. Lawrence, thank you for really taking the, taking the lead on the meeting with SCE Edison and our four cities. And we were very, very, I was very impressed that we were able to pull it off so quickly with Henry Stern. So thank you to our four city managers, our mayors, Senator Henry Stern and SCE for coming out and problem solving. As Mr. Lawrence said, we want to make sure that when there is routine outages, and we're talking strictly routine maintenance outages, power outages, that it is done after school and work hours. We all have to be at home right now. Our students are home and we do not want them to lose that learning time. On another note, as Mrs. Wasserman and Mr. Lawrence were going to say, right now, schools in LA County are not allowed to open, period. The end of the story. However, private schools around us are opening. And we don't know why and we don't know, we don't know why actually, because the health ordinance is that they are not allowed to, or no schools are allowed to. So what I first want to say is, virtual learning, distance learning is hard on everyone. Our teachers are working probably harder than they've ever worked in their lives, differently and harder. It's not what anybody, I'm going to say this, I'm not a teacher, but I'm just going to go out on a limb and say this. It's not what anybody, any teacher got into is to teach students from home. They need and they crave, and they did this, for this human connection, to see in the eyes of a student next to them, the glimmer of the light bulb going off. And this is really hard on everyone. And a day does not go by that we as a board, that me, myself, the Cabinet does not hear, and I know teachers too, and staff, everybody's working so hard and so differently, hear about the stresses at home, the social, emotional toll this is taking on students. So as the board president and the board in general, we have been advocating with our county supervisor, Sheila Kuehl's office, Dr. Farrar, who's in charge of the health department, I guess, she's the one we see on TV. We've been writing emails. Parents are frustrated. They are not frustrated with our teachers. Want to make that really clear. I have never received a complaint about a teacher. As a matter of fact, I've only heard appreciation for our teachers, our staff, our administrators, everybody. It's the emotional toll this is taking on our parents and our students being so isolated. And the fact that many of our parents have to work and it's very hard to put, Ms. Carter teaches first graders, first graders on Zoom and off of Zoom. And so we have been advocating. I will tell you today, I've not received a response from either Supervisor Kuehl or Dr. Farrar. Dr. Stepanowski, Mayor Weintraub is a parent and the mayor of Calabasas. She also hears a lot from parents about this, the same exact things that I just discussed. And she reached out to the media. And so Dr. Stepanowski and I were interviewed last night very, it was done very quickly by Channel 4 News and it aired last night and it should be airing on and off today. But I want to make it perfectly clear to everyone at home and everyone watching and every teacher and employee in this district, we know you're working hard. This is not about you. It's about getting our students back into school safely. It's about allowing waivers and watching the numbers and making sure that if there is a rule, an ordinance, a regulation, that schools cannot be open, I do not understand why private schools around us are opening. With that, I'm going to conclude the staff board communication and turn it over to Dr. Stepanowski.
Thank you very much. Madam President, members of the board, just one thing for me. I think I have a picture, Mr. Klein. So we had five students who were selected as semifinalists, national merit semifinalists. This is a 66th annual award of this, 55-year-running award. 1.5 million juniors participate from 21,000 high schools across the country, 16,000, only 16,000 down from 1.5 million are selected. And five of them are ours. 7,600 will advance and receive further distinction. And they are Ms. Rachel Fox, Ethan Goldenberg, Daniel Nathanson, Quinn Anne Nguyen, and Jeremy White. We congratulate all of you, both there from Calabasas and Agora. Congratulations to those five now seniors. Dr. Fineran.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, just wanted to echo what we experienced tonight in terms of our staff and the ways that they are working in ways they haven't before. They're investing extensive time, energy, and creativity to make the best of distance learning. And we just want to continue to express our gratitude to them. Secondly, wanted to share that the evaluation process of our administrators is an ongoing process. We collaborate with them on goal setting and we have frequent meetings and conversations regarding these goals and coach them towards achieving their goals. Now that school is well underway, these meetings occur more frequently. And like I said, our evaluation process and coaching of them is ongoing. As we've heard earlier from our board members and from Dr. Stepanowski, we cannot wait to have our students back on campus when it is safe and doable. And we're hoping that that's sooner rather than later. Tonight, you'll hear a presentation regarding bringing small groups of our students who are served by IEPs back onto campus. And we're really looking forward to that and preparing diligently for that.
Mitch Klein.
There we go. Madam, Madam President, members of the board, I wanted to personally congratulate our two employees of the month. I have had the great pleasure of working with them for quite some time, especially on technology issues. And I can confidently say that we couldn't have had this successful launch as we did at the beginning of this year without their amazing expertise and amazing talent. So thank, congratulations and thank you to both of you.
Also wanted to share, in light of our most recent smoke issues, one of the things the district is looking into is putting in some air quality sensors across the district. We're looking at the Purple Air devices. And as you can see on the screen here, this is a sample of what it kind of looks like. You have a little map that you can pull up and you can see what your air quality actually is at your various locations. We're talking about putting in some sensors regionally in the district so that when we have incidents like this, we can pull them up and actually see our numbers for our district and what our values are, which I think will be very useful for us as we establish some standards in terms of what to do with kids when we have unhealthy air and those sorts of things. So we're working together, Ms. Fineran and I are working together to set those standards so that we can better prepare our campuses and keep our kids safe.
Okay, that's impressive. Thank you.
It turns out our area has very few sensors in it. If you, if you look on the various air quality management sites, and at 90 square miles, it were a significant size and on this, on kind of long and thin. And so you can have quite different air quality, AC Stella and Linderer Canyon Middle School. So I think we're looking at five sensors spread evenly across the length of the district to give us a little bit of redundancy and really up-to-the-minute data. Some of the websites can be one, two hours behind and circumstance can change quickly with quick blowing wind. So obviously, we want to be better able to respond with better data. So we're very excited about Mitch Klein and Ms. Kimmel working on this project together. And of course, now that we have so much experience in distance learning, we can more aggressively, once this pandemic has passed, shut down sites or go to a distance learning if there's a red flag warning situation. Ms. Kimmel.
Excuse me, I think Ms. Wasserman has a question.
Yes, so will this connect in with like AQ, like with the official? Or is this just permitted to our monitoring?
It doesn't cook into any specific authority necessarily. It's more of an internal kind of a thing. We partner with Purple Air, which provides the service for free in exchange for us purchasing it. And then they can share it out so that the public can see what the values are as well. So it's kind of.
Were you thinking about putting it onto our website?
Yes, we could certainly put links to this on our main website as soon as we get this all lit up.
Thank you.
But I think when we have like a smoke issue, you know, and we may have to make a decision site by site, as we've talked about, you know, students on campus and having to have them not be on campus because of smoke, I think that'll be really helpful.
Well, that's when it gets nice because we can have some real hard standards and then people will know exactly what to expect. So that's what we're going for.
Thank you.
Ms. Kimmel.
So I just want to thank Dr. Klein, Jim Klein, for, for working hard on this because it is difficult not to have consistent data. And the public out there, there are so many different websites, so many different apps, and they're all different. So to have a consistent data point for our specific district and throughout our district will be really helpful. And I just wanted to, again, thank the child nutrition team. And I think I took my time earlier today in recognizing them. So thank you.
Mr. Seifries and Mr. Gleason, then Ms. Falk.
Madam President, members of the board, excited to share with you that we are launching a fall administrator support series. One of the goals of our Cabinet team this year is to provide sustained support for, support for our administrative team. These sessions will consist of anything from running a successful 504 IEP SST meeting to finance, we got one from Ms. Kimmel, finance, facilities, and fun. It's a hot topic on the administrative support series, as well as bullying investigations to help with our administrative teams. And of course, if Mr. Gleason is involved, it would not be appropriate to not have a book study involved as well. For this fall, we're going to be looking at a title called Help: I Work With People, which is one of his personal favorites. Should be a lot of fun and also is a great way to support our administrators throughout the fall.
Is that really what it's called, Help: I Work With People?
That is true story, great, great book on leadership. And Ms. Kimmel assures us that no one will be operating heavy machinery after finance, facilities, and funds. So.
Ms. Gleason, you're?
Madam President, members of the board, just want to share with you, actually, as we speak, working on the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant application, which is due two days from now.
What are you doing here?
It's been burning the midnight oil on that. So that's a grant we've received over $2 million over the last few years on. And so we're going out again. It's an annual grant for $400,000, where we have a two-to-one match. So keep your fingers. So keep your fingers crossed on that one. Also, our eye in another grant with respect to supporting our virtual academy financially that we've been talking about in our committees.
Thank you.
Ms. Falk.
Just on the grants, we heard yesterday on the SoCal Edison call that there is a perfect, it's a big call, SCHIP, I think it was what they're calling it, which is a pot of money that's available for school districts to go get solar and those types of things. If that's something that you are overseeing or that sits somewhere else in Ms. Kimmel's work?
I would be happy to write it. I just need to know, and Ms. Kimmel and I usually work really closely as there's all cabinet on, on those things. So if we have a link, we can definitely look into it and bring the RFA response to finance or pathways.
I think, I think Jeremy Wolfe said that Ms. Wasserman had sent that information on to Ms. Kimmel. Does that sound familiar, Ms. Wasserman?
You're on mute.
You're on mute? She, she.
There you go. It wasn't unmuting. I'm like tap, 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 tap. Yes, I sent it. It's, it's a great thing for them to say. It's not really, I don't think there's much depth or availability for us in it.
Thank you very much. But you will check it out.
And I did send it on.
Thank you.
Ms. Amadou, then Ms. Kins.
Madam President, members of the board, it is important to maintain traditions, especially during these untraditional times. And so I'm happy to announce that although we were unable to celebrate our retirees last spring, we will be truly celebrating them before our next board meeting on October 6th. So stay tuned for more and Dr. Dan, get your packs ready.
I was hoping the pandemic would save me. Ms. Kins.
Madam President, members of the board, I want to give a shout out to our elementary, middle, and high school English language development teachers. They have assessed students in person and remotely on the initial English language proficiency assessment exam. And this exam is given to new English learners that move into our district and it's a very important exam to give. It was a lot for them to learn to navigate the administration of this state assessment in a very different way. So they either had students come in in person, following all the safety protocols, scheduling with parents to bring the little ones in, or they administered it remotely. And there was a device for a teacher wherever they were and then a student at home. So the deadline for this is this Thursday, so that we're meeting that deadline for all students. And lastly, just very proud of our principals and plant managers for the excellent work in preparing for small groups of special education students by arranging learning center furniture, designated bathrooms for specific cohorts, and organizing their instructional materials and fine tuning their health screen procedures.
That concludes staff communication.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we move on to hearing of delegations or comments from the audience regarding items not on the agenda. And we have received no comments for items not on the agenda and items on the agenda. At this point of the meeting, anybody that is not part of the meeting on the screen, you are welcome to log off or you can stay and, and enjoy the rest of our, bye, Dr. Roberts. And, and you are welcome to stay for any further part of our meeting, but you are welcome to leave. And we thank you again for being part of our celebrations today. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve consent A.
So moved.
Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence, and was that, who was that?
Window or I.
Or you got it, Ms. Kimmel. Okay. And any comments or questions on any consent items? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the motion. Student, do you approve of the items on consent?
I approve.
Terrific. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was five, passes five zero. And now we're moving on to consent item B, the personnel documents. And may I have a motion, please, to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Lawrence motioned and second?
Second.
Ms. Wasserman, second. This is a board only vote. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes five zero. Moving on to action items and give me a minute to load them up on my, there's many of them. We start with a public hearing for LVC A. So Dr. Stepanowski. Well, let's do a little background first. Dr. Stepanowski?
Madam President, members of the board, much appreciation to our negotiating teams and our relationship we enjoy with LVC A. And Ms. Cindy Lunsford as president, very difficult circumstances to be working under, but the team worked hard all summer, many negotiation sessions with LVC and LVA, but we do appreciate the close working partnership. Obviously, these times are challenging. There is plenty of stress out there. We recognize, you know, that weight and burden upon our classified staff and how critical and important they are to everything we do. We are pleased to share that there is a tentative agreement. Certainly, the funding for both of our associations, all of our wonderful, amazing employees and all the celebration we had today, doesn't recognize our feelings and their true value to our students and the community. They more unfortunately represent the financial realities of public solistics across the state. Nonetheless, we greatly appreciate all of our LVC A members and the value and importance they play in the roles of our students. Mr. Seifries.
I will hand it off to Ms. Amadou, but not before I thank her and show appreciation for the wonderful job that she and Ms. Cindy Lunsford did throughout the entire summer of classified negotiations, just to see their teamwork, the way they work together, the way that all units and all members of each negotiating team were able to get this done in the challenging circumstances, an effort like no other. Ms. Amadou.
Madam President, members of the board, to echo what Dr. Stepanowski and Mr. Seifries said, really negotiations in any year, you know, require tremendous amount of collaboration and understanding and clarity of thought. And this year, certainly unlike no other, required an absolute dedication to doing what was right for students, for staff, and for our district. And I am grateful to Cindy Lunsford, president of the Classified Association and her team for their collaboration, which really enabled us to reach an agreement this early in the school year. So thank you to both teams for that. So as part of the process, we have reached a tentative agreement, which has been ratified by Los Virginous Classified Association membership. And as a part of the process, it comes before you first is a public hearing to be open for public comment. And so we asked that it be open for public hearing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Amadou. May I have a motion to, to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to take Mrs. Wasserman on that. And may I have a second to open it?
A second.
Ms. Mangus, second. And may I have a vote from the board only to open the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The hearing is open. The only way for the public to speak on the hearing is to provide written comment. And we received none. So now I'm going to ask for a motion from the board to close. Mr. Lawrence made the motion to close and may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'm going to take it from Mrs. Mangus seconded. And board, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now we move, move on to approval of the tentative agreement with the Los Virginous Classified Association. Dr. Stepanowski.
Ms. Amadou.
Hey, Madam President, members of the board, coming before you tonight, the tentative agreement for board approval has been approved, as we said, by Los Virginous Classified Association. And so we request at this time that we bring that before you for your votes.
Thank you very. Okay, Mr. Lawrence made a motion to approve. May I have a second?
A second.
And we have a second. And before I call for the vote, I'm going to ask if anybody would like to say anything on behalf of the board? Okay, I will. Anybody else? I want to take this opportunity to also thank Cindy Lunsford for her leadership. What a Herculean job it is, was, is, was, is, from March when we closed down and had to negotiate contracts and all this during a pandemic, which is remotely and everybody's dealing with their jobs and their, their families. And so I want to thank you, Cindy, for your leadership and the negotiating team that you have and your leadership team. And I also want to thank the, the district cabinet and the district negotiating team on this. The board is very fortunate. This does not happen in many districts. We actually sit in on negotiations. We are Switzerland. We do not participate in negotiations, but we observe them. And as someone, and I believe most, if not all of our board members had an opportunity to do this, and it is always professional, and there's always an attitude of collaboration. And it is, is just a wonderful thing to view, everyone coming together to do the best for employees and really the best for students. So again, thank you, thank you, Cindy, and, and all of LVC A. And with that, I'm going to call for the motion to approve the tentative, the vote to approve the tentative agreement. And this student, no, this is a board vote only. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Terrific. Passes five zero. Now we're on to hearing for compliance for textbooks and instructional materials. Dr. Stepp.
Mr. Gleason has the next two items. Mr. Gleason.
Madam President, members of the board, this is our annual requirement to provide, to share textbook sufficiency information with the board. Happy to share with you that as we go through the process of allocating books to both virtual academy and to our 14 comprehensive schools, we have textbooks in students' hands. Every now and then we have, especially with our dual enrollment courses, we have some gaps in enrollment and we quickly fill those with overnight orders. But we are in a good position for the district and students have their materials.
That's wonderful to hear. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Lawrence made the motion and may I have a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Kuntel, thank you, made the second. So board, no, student, are you in favor of opening the public hearing? Noah?
Yes.
Terrific. Board, all those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a public hearing. Again, the only way to submit comments would be written. We've received none. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. And I believe Mr. Lawrence made a motion and may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Mangus gets credit for that second. And at this point, I'm going to call for the vote to close the public hearing. Student, Noah, do you favor closing this public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Board, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Don't do it, Noah.
It's his first meeting, it'd be nice to him.
Okay, too late. He already voted to close the public hearing. And I did not, with all that fun stuff at home, did not hear the vote for the board. So board, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we closed the public hearings. Next is to approve that we are going to, oh, first of all, thank you for making sure every student has what they need. That's the most important thing. So Mr. Gleason and your team, whoever's, whoever is the books and material fairies in the district, we really, we thank you because it is a Herculean job every year. And this job with, this year with having no students in classrooms, thank you. It was harder in a virtual academy. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for saying.
Yes, we have fairies under contract. So it's one of those things where they just get done. Everybody in this district is so wonderful. They make sure that our kids have what they need under this most extraordinary crazy time. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. And I should have also addressed that in the intro. Ms. Tina Johnson, Ms. Leslie Timbers, the, the library team at all of our schools are so integral in this. And it's, it is a heavy lift, a heavy lift. So appreciate all their work.
Thank you very much. Dr. Stepp, do you want to do an intro on that we certify it? Or you want me to just to go straight to a motion? Okay. So I need, I would like to have a motion to approve resolution 2-20 certification of compliance with ED Code 60119, textbook and instructional materials.
So moved.
Mr. Lawrence, Mrs. Wasserman. And with that, I'm going to, any other comments? No comments. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. Student, do you, do you agree with the certification that students have what they need in books and materials?
Uh, yes.
Great. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. That passes five zero. And we move right along to the approval of the unaudited actuals financial report for 1920. Dr. Stepp?
Ms. Kimmel.
Thank you, Madam President, and Dr. Stepanowski, members of the board. Tonight, we bring to you the final results of the 2019-20 fiscal year. This was a year like none other that we've ever dealt with. Not only did we have a brand new system, a software system to work through with the county changing over to their new software best system, we also had the pandemic working remotely and all the challenges that went with those two items. So I am going to thank Christine Torres and her team for all the hard work. The full 100-page agenda item is in the board doc and available for everybody to review for all the results for every fund that we have. And I'm going to ask Ms. Torres to walk us through a couple of the highlights.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmel. Here, if you want to move to the next slide, we did a summary of the net results for our major funds. We'll talk a little bit more about our general fund in a later slide. But for our other major funds, child nutrition did have a loss due to the shutdown in the spring and not having the parent-paid meals that we typically would have had. So they had a net loss for the year. Our deferred maintenance fund has a, we had more revenues than our expenditures, but that's pretty typical for that fund as that's our reserve for the summer projects. Fund 21 is our bond fund, and our expenditures were more than revenue as we were completing the Lupin multipurpose room project. But we still have about $5 million remaining in that fund reserved for tech infrastructure and our UV HVAC system. The capital facilities fund is derived from new and remodel home construction that occurs within our district boundaries. The collections have slowed down a bit and we definitely saw a reduction in revenues in the spring, but it was nearly enough to cover the cost of our debt service payments for our COP. So on our next slide, you can see the components of our ending fund balance in our general fund. Exercising our fiscal prudence, we've identified components of the fund balance as committed or assigned to cover our future expenses. And we're fortunate enough to have unappropriated funds to help ease our deficit spending as we continue to have our structural deficit. But those funds are helping us balance our budget as we work through those operational challenges. This was our first year-end close with the new financial system that Laco has provided, known as the best system. We did find some positives with this new software system. It did allow for a lot of electronic data and workflow and payments and payroll and things like that to continue to happen in this remote working environment. So that was definitely a plus to not have to rely on the paper that we did in the old system. But we did have a challenge in that some of the things that we only do once a year while we're closing our books, that functionality was missing that we didn't realize until closer to the end of the year. And so it kind of slowed down our process. And so it kind of slowed down our process. But we were still able to meet all of our statutory deadlines related to closing our books for the year, related to the unaudited actuals, the areas that fluctuated from what we expected in the spring. Mostly, it was, we had anticipated the reduced revenue with shutting down the district and not being able to have rentals and leases of our facilities. But a lot of our operational costs also came to a halt in the spring where we weren't able to hire for vacancies. We had utilities were reduced as the school were not being fully utilized. We had services of transportation and things that were not to the level that they would have if we were operating in our regular school environment. So these operational savings or reductions more than offset the lost revenue we encountered from not being able to rent our facilities.
And we just wanted to provide the board at this juncture an updated multi-year projection where we were able to layer in the slightly more favorable unaudited actuals in the 1920 column and how that rolls forward. So the two changes that we've made since the board saw this at the 45-day revise a month ago was the, are the actuals that are in the 1920 column. And then if you look to the future in the 22-23 school year, you're able to see the impact of this year's declining enrollment. And we're going to go over enrollment at an information item in a few moments. So we do have that two-year hold harmless for the, using the 1920 actual enrollment figures, which unfortunately is still $3 million less than the year before. But we get to hold off on taking the big hit of almost a 5% drop that we're experiencing right now. So with all that, you can see on line 12 where we have a challenge over the next three years to develop budget efficiencies of $13 million. So that will be what our next focus is as we go forward.
So here you can see our timeline over the next few months. We did not get a summer revision to the budget from the state. That was a possibility. That has not happened. But we don't know if there's going to be any mid-year cuts announced in January. We're also feeling that there's diminishing hopes of any additional federal relief as we receive from the CARES Act funding. We do have a study session scheduled in November, as well as numerous finance committee meetings to address our operating deficit over the next few months. And we will be back in just three months with the first interim budget update. And it will incorporate these first few crazy months of school and all of the staffing that goes along with it as the changes keep happening from week to week. So we'll have a better idea, hopefully, in December of how our budget's going to look for the rest of the year at that time.
And that's our presentation, and we're available for questions on any of the 100 pages that were included in the board agenda.
Thank you. And with that, may I have a motion to approve the unaudited actuals financial report as presented for 1920?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Oh, go ahead, Dallas.
No, you go ahead.
Then Finance Committee, you go first.
No, I was just going to say, like, I appreciate this has been my seven and a half years in the Finance Committee. This has been the most challenging financial situation I've seen in the way that we have navigated and, you know, ensured that we have the flexibility of the district to operate. It's been just really comforting to see, and not a surprise, because that's what I've seen over the years. We have that, we have that just unmatched professionalism in our finance team. But you really come to appreciate it even more in times like now. So just to thank you to the whole team for what they've done and how they've kept us moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Torres and the Finance Team and Karen Kimmel. I really appreciate it. The fiscal information as a concept is great. I always am challenged by like the little details and the little lines beyond just needing magnifiers to read it. And I really appreciate how well you make this accessible. And so I feel like the level of transparency with our community is really well met. And I just want to say thank you for making it something that's digestible, although, you know, unpalatable for the budget deficit. But thank you for making it something that the common person can read and understand.
Any other comments?
I'd like to echo their sentiments. And on top of that, the frustration of dealing with a brand-new accounting system in the BEST system and trying to work out any kinks in the system and doing, I'm assuming you had to do that virtually. And just kudos to all of you for doing your magic that you do every year of spending your time in digesting this information, presenting it to us in a way that we can try and understand it. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always succinct. Always well done.
And I will echo what my fellow board members said. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Thank you, Ms. Kimmel. What a year. And we're still in the middle of it. So, thank you. So with that, I'll call for the vote. Student, do you approve of the actuals financial report?
Yes, I do.
Well, thank you. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
5-0. Thank you very much. Next is approval of the LCAP, Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan.
Mr. Gleason. Madam President, members of the board, we had a public hearing on this agenda item at our last board meeting. So happy to go over any details. Nothing has changed in the plan. However, we are working with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, who always has revisions for us to make sure it meets the statute. So we ask, every time we have an LCAP approval, regardless of what the letters stand for in the acronym, we ask for the board to give us the grace to make those technical adjustments without needing to bring it back. And so with all that, any questions I might have, happy to answer. Otherwise, move forward.
May I have a motion to approve the LCAP? Please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Mingus. May I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any comments or questions on this?
An LCAP presentation that's down for 10 minutes.
Do we have a presentation? Or did I miss it? What?
It's just down. It's just down on the agenda for 10 minutes. And because of the way things have changed this year in the pandemic, it's an abbreviated process. So it just, because it's usually such a laborious process. That was my...
Okay, no, I don't, Mr. Gleason's getting, there's too much motion here. So did I miss something? It's like people moving around the room.
No, no.
So there's no, there's no official slides or presentation, right?
No missing presentations. As Ms. Kupnil said, this is a plan to show, just for the community's sake, to show how we close the gap during this time. Normally, our LCAP is filled with goals, actions, and expenditures. And this, this is reporting documented with expenditures related strictly to the pandemic.
And we did have a hearing last meeting where we did discuss it.
It's just sometimes it's like an hour-long thing because it's during normal time. So that's all.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Thank you.
I'm just hearing that Ms. Kupnil would like to have a separate side, one-on-one, two-hour briefing.
Yes.
Scheduled for after, so maybe you got by, schedule that for tomorrow and walk her through ad nauseam all the pieces of it.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence, I heard the same thing. I think she really misses it. So with that, the board thanks you and your team of LCAPpers. Thank you very much for making us compliant, keeping us compliant. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. Student, do you approve the LCAP?
Yes.
Board, all those in favor of the LCAP?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 5-0. Next, we have approval of a variable term waiver permit.
Madam President, members of the board, if you liked the last LCAP item, Mr. Saifers will knock your socks off with the next two. He's got a variable term waiver. And my personal favorite, PIPs, provisional internship permits.
Madam President, members of the board, staff is seeking a variable term waiver permit for a special education teacher of ours, Ms. Limor Benuelos. COVID-19 placed an imposition on Ms. Benuelos, says she was unable to complete the necessary credentialing requirements, but is now working on the requirements to enter a credentialing program. Therefore, staff is requesting approval of the variable term waiver in order so that Ms. Benuelos can continue teaching her assignment at Calgassus High School for the 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we, did you get that, Ms. Kimmel? Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Only gets better from here, Ms. Wasserman.
One of my favorites of the week.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call for the vote so we can make sure this teacher can continue teaching. Student board member, Noah, you approve of this waiver?
Yes.
Terrific. Board, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And next, we have a provisional internship waiver.
Madam President, members of the board, staff is now seeking a provisional internship permit for a special education teacher of ours, Ms. Shelby Frye. Ms. Frye has been over at Lupin Hill for three years. She is planning on entering a credentialing program in 2122, but for now, would need this approval in order to move forward with her assignment. Therefore, staff is requesting approval of the provisional internship permit in order so that Ms. Frye can continue at Lupin Hill.
Terrific. Thank you very much. A motion to approve the preliminary, the approval of the provisional internship permit credential.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was Mrs. Wasserman, and Mr. Lawrence seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. I will call for the vote. Student, are you in favor of this waiver?
Yes.
Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes 5-0 with the student also. Moving on to information items, the first one is on supplemental early retirement. Dr. Stepp?
This is an element of the negotiated agreement with our LVEA. Mr. Saifers?
Dr. Stepp said it well. This was a product of our summer negotiations. Through our, both teams, both parties have agreed to a one-time retirement incentive beginning in January of 2021, concluding in June of 2021. Lots of hard work to get there, so big thank you to both our certificated LVA folks and our district folks, as well as particular thanks to Ms. Kimmel and Mr. Hokaus for really going in and figuring out the details of this potential plan. One thing I should note before passing it off, the parties do understand that the final determination of the program's feasibility is going to be based on the number of enrollees and projected savings for the district. We do have some very special guests with us tonight. I think I see them on the screen up there. They're going to introduce the details of this program. This is Mr. Dan Keenan, Senior Vice President, and Mr. Jeffrey Mizukawa, Assistant Vice President. And I will defer to them for the presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, cabinet staff, and community members. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about the Supplemental Employee Retirement Plan. I promise I'll be brief. This is planned to be about 10 minutes and give an overview about this benefit and how it'll work and the timeline related to this program. And I do apologize, Dan Keenan is not available this evening, so I will be doing the presentation. But I, you know, if you don't mind, moving to the next slide. Thank you. So there's four sections we're going to talk about today to help everybody understand SERP as a program and its an offering. The first we'll talk about is the purpose. Then we'll go into the study we did, which involves a look at demographics and the economics. And then we'll end with how we enroll this program as it is a voluntary benefit offering. Great. So SERP, as much of the market knows it, is the acronym for the Supplemental Early Retirement Plan or Employee Retirement Plan. It's basically Keenan's Early Retirement Incentive Solution that we've been implementing across the states since 1984. It is primarily a solution aimed at addressing declining enrollment, advancing retirements, and thereby avoiding layoffs, reducing pension obligations, and lastly, providing, in this case, an HRA, which is a health reimbursement arrangement to offset medical expenses for those who participate in retirement. We like to talk about this type of a program as a win-win during the negotiation phase in that both labor and management find value out of these types of arrangements. It does help address and reduce payroll by advancing retirements of your most tenured faculty or certificated members in this case. But what it also does, it enhances the retirement benefits of those who are able to participate in this plan. So we do feel it's a win-win. The first item we look at to determine feasibility and whether or not a program is appropriate and able to be offered is the demographics for the group. So these numbers represent your certificated employees specifically. Eligibility for this program was drawn based on two factors, and that is that the individual must be at least 55 years of age and have at least five years of service by their retirement date. In this case, when we looked at the census of all teachers across Lost Virginous United School District, we found 134 individuals who met this criteria. The average age of these 134 individuals is 61.6 years of age and 21.6 years of service. The reason we point to these two statistics when we're looking at feasibility and success in these programs is we need to understand whether or not there's a large enough captive population that can actually consider retirement. And so for us, we're looking to see that average age of the group is at or above 60 years of age, and that average years of service is at or above 20 years of service. It's at this point that we see really enough population in the eligible group to warrant an offer. This, and I do apologize for those with smaller laptop screens, may be very small, but I'll try to explain what it is. The scattergram at the top represents the 134 individuals who are eligible. The Y-axis, or vertical axis, being the years of service, and the X, or horizontal axis, representing your years of age. For an exercise, what we would say is if you draw a vertical line up from 60 and a horizontal line across from 20, anybody in the upper right-hand quadrant would be considered your most likely to participate in this voluntary offer. Now, down below at the table, at the bottom here, you're going to see a couple of numbers that we want to point to. That table at the bottom, if you go across the first row to 60, I'm going to just explain how to read this. This is showing you that of the 134 individuals, 10 are 60 years old. 73 of the 134 are 60 and over, which represents about 54% of your eligible group. And this is really who we would be looking at in terms of participation in the program. So there's about 73 that represent, again, a little more than half of the entire eligible group. Economics. Very specifically, these programs are offered in California to public agencies due to step-in column structure. It's what creates enough salary differential between your tenured employees and your incoming new hires that allow you to design and offer these types of programs. We show two situations to show the kind of vast difference in savings based on whether or not a position participating will be replaced or not. So on the left, and I do want to say for the purposes of this analysis and the savings that you'll be looking at tonight, we have assumed that all positions will be replaced to give a very conservative look at potential payroll savings under this type of a program. So we're really going to focus at that table on the left. Your retirees have an average salary of just a little over $91,000. $91,600 is the average salary of that 134 individuals. Your new hires are estimated in their first year to come in at $65,500. The incentive which will go into in-depth is a $40,000 offer paid in five annual installments of $8,000. When you add all that and the different components together, we're looking at savings in the first year. first year of this program of 18, a little over $18,000 per participant. Moving on to highlight the benefit, the benefit is a $40,000 contribution to a health reimbursement arrangement. We'll talk a little bit more in detail about what that is, but it will be funded for employees who elect to retire between January of 2021 and June 30th of 2021. The benefit of HRAs, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with what an HRA is, it's very similar to an FSA or flexible spending account. For those of you who have one, it's a way to put pre-tax dollars aside to help you offset and pay for eligible medical expenses. So this $40,000 does need to be spent on eligible medical expenses, but the benefit of this is that these monies are what are called triple tax-free, meaning that $40,000 will come into an account for each participant tax-free, so it will not be taxed upon deposit into your account. These accounts do have interest that are applied to them, and so these amounts that are unused will grow with interest over time, and that accumulated interest is also tax-free. And lastly, due to the fact that to access the money, you'd have to spend it on a eligible medical expense, it works as a reimbursement to you based on those eligible expenses, and those reimbursements are also not taxed. So do not want to bore the, the younger members here, like Board Member, Student Member Noah, but the reality with this is you'll, you'll find one day tax-free money is valuable. So that is the value of the HRA and, and this vehicle. Lastly, and, and perfect, we can move on here. The way the payments will be structured is over five years. Again, $8,000 a year for five years into the HRA. From the district's perspective, there is a 4.25% commission paid, and that is, if you will, 4.25% of the $8,000 on an annual basis, and that commission will be paid in five annual installments. Once the funding period is over, meaning in the sixth year when the district is not contributing any additional funds to the HRA, the administrative fees tied to these accounts for things like the debit card and for claims administration will then revert to the account owner and be debited at a rate of $8 per month from the HRA account. This, you know, is very small, I'm sure on your screens in terms of font. I will just say that what this represents are the assumptions we utilized when calculating or projecting savings under this plan. The four major areas, and I won't bore you with going through them, are really we factored in the healthcare costs for retirees, we factored in statutory benefits, and then compared that against the differential between the outgoing or the existing salaries as compared to the replacement salaries we have projected, which start again at a little over $65,000, ending at close to $80,000 by the fifth year. Our savings are done in a, call it two-step process. The first process we look at, or the first step, is we understand that there would be a number of employees, or in this case, teachers, who would have retired without an incentive. For the purposes of this analysis, we assume that 14 individuals would have retired without a plan. The calculation here, and I'll walk you across the top, starting with column A, shows again over a five-year period, what the salary would have been for the outgoing retiree or, or eligible employee as compared to the replacement salary. You'll see that based on those numbers in column C, there's about $97,000 in salary differential or salary savings tied to the, just the difference between the outgoing and the incoming new hire. As many of you are aware, a dollar in payroll is not necessarily just a dollar paid by the district. There are also statutory costs, including unemployment insurance, Medicare, workers' compensation, and lastly, and, and most importantly, your, your employer pension contribution. So for every dollar of payroll saved, you are actually saving, you know, between 20 and 24 cents, if you will, in statutory costs as well. So that $22,000 in additional savings represents the reduced statutory costs. In column E, you're looking at an average of the healthcare costs for the retirees, all summing up in column I to over a five-year period, we look at savings to be about a little over $110,000 an individual over five years if nothing were offered. So what we're trying to do here is we then take that $110,000 and we multiply it by the 14 expected retirees, and we assume that the district would have saved over a five-year period, a little over $1.5 million in total payroll if it did nothing. The reason that's important is on the next slide, thank you, the only additional information we're layering in here are in columns G and H, which are now the cost of the incentive, as well as the cost of the commissions. You'll see what that does is it has a net effect of reducing the five-year expected savings from $110,000 to just about $69,000 in individual. However, the value of the SERP program is that instead of 14 retirements, we believe with the offer, you could advance up to, and we're projecting around 24 certificated retirements. At the lower savings, but at the higher projected retiree amount, we're looking at savings under this scenario being about 1.65 million. Break even, which is a number that, you know, is important to many groups, is not the number of participants that needs to be achieved to achieve a dollar in savings. That is the number of participants that needs to be achieved to exceed the savings that would have been achieved without a plan at all. So that is an important, if I can call out, yes?
So, question about, that means we need to have eight additional retirees beyond what we anticipate to pay for what it would cost to get those eight additional retirees to retire. Am I thinking about that correctly?
Yeah, well, you, exactly. From a break even standpoint, you're, you're correct. We think we're going to advance at least 10, and that to exceed, you know, what would be required, what you would have received anyway, you're right, it would have been eight above the 14 that naturally would have retired.
So, to, just to think through, sorry, so you're saying we do nothing, your model shows us saving 1.4 million. We're offering a sizable incentive to pay for that incentive to not impact that 1.4 million in savings, we need to have eight additional retirees taken.
Exactly.
Break even. Maybe I missed this. What number are we suggesting then that we set this at? We want this to be revenue positive, not just revenue neutral, right?
Absolutely. And, and what you're looking at here is a very conservative estimate, and, and the reason it's very conservative is it assumes that every single one of these positions would have to be replaced, which may not be the case. Thus, the way the language is written around this program is we are not setting a hard participation amount. What will happen is at the close of the enrollment period, we're going to take exactly those participants and work with Karen and her team to determine what the staffing will look like for each one of those individual positions. At that point, when we know whether or not definitively these positions will be replaced or not, we'll basically develop a final savings analysis on which the board and the organization will make the final decision.
If I can ask, what is your, like, I, I feel like the board should take a position that says we're not, we should take a preemptive position, state we're not going to offer this for the next 24 months. Again, something like that. What's, like, what's your, what's your point of view on, maybe even it's just like a resolution of the board's intent, which is obviously non-binding, something like that?
Yeah. Well, in practice, we never want these programs to become institutional offers, meaning every year, you know, some form of an incentive comes out because you, you lose its impact as an incentive. Now, the danger we're seeing in drawing hard timelines like a 24-month moratorium on looking at these programs again is, in the last two years, we've worked with a handful or multitude of districts who were doing these for declining enrollment purposes. They might have done this a year or two ago. With COVID and the most recent budget impacts, many of those are having to look at offering them far ahead of when they would have expected being able to do another offering. So while I never want us to consider another pandemic and/or another large-scale disaster, you know, that could impact economy and staffing expectation, the reality is, is we're seeing that some of these very unplanned events are creating a need for organizations who've offered it within the last 24 months to come back to the table to either reopen or craft new offerings. So that's kind of my, my two cents on it. If we hadn't just seen what happened with COVID, I'd say that, you know, that's great policy, but I don't know if you necessarily want to prevent yourself from having the ability to look at this if something large-scale happens, you know, the next 24 months.
Ms. Kimmel?
I was just, yeah, I was just going to share that we're going to bring to the board a resolution to approve the plan at the next board meeting, and in our resolution, we, we definitely list things such as intent, and we can put, it's the intent of the board that this is a unique offering in this year, and some language surrounding that to meet Mr. Lawrence's goals.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the board. I mean, I, I for one, I mean, I advocated strongly for a larger payout than normal, and I know the board did as well. My intent was a unique circumstance item, and I wouldn't want this to be thought of as something that we're going to be doing on a regular basis. I really want people who are sitting on the fence to realize, I don't want them to feel left out, because it's not my intent to offer something like this size again in the near future.
Well, I think we can look back at the history of the district. Ms. Kimmel, when was the last time we offered an early retirement incentive?
It was five years ago.
Five years ago, and prior to that, do you recall?
It's generally been about five years in between.
Okay, so about every five years. So I think that the employees that qualify for this will see that there is a conservative pattern in our district. You know, Ms. Kimmel, if you want to, if you want to add in the resolution, unique situation, that's fine. I don't really want to limit ourselves, we don't know what we're facing in the future, and that is, we want to, we want to leave all options on the table for all of us as we move forward with declining enrollment and a really rocky economy ahead of us. But I do appreciate that, Mr. Lawrence, we can add in those, that, that language. And I think, like I said, I think people in the district know the history of the district. It's about every five years. Thank you. Mr. Mizukawa, keep going.
Perfect. Thank you. This is a quick summary. If you look at the far right, and, and this is really the most important piece, we are showing five-year total net savings of $104,742. Again, the, how we got to that is we're comparing the 1.6 million in savings with the $40,000 offer against the 1.45 million, if you will, in savings that would have been achieved without a plan at all. So again, a very conservative look at savings because we assume that basically all of these 24 positions are going to be replaced at what we know to be market value salaries, which is that, you know, just over 65, closer to $66,000 incoming salary.
I'd like to add one more thing. So the 22 people is the break even. So as the enrollment period closes and you do the analyzation, if it comes that we don't meet the threshold of 22 people for the break even, we do not have to go forward with this plan, correct?
Correct. And more so than tying it to the 22 individuals, what you will see is you're going to get a final analysis that shows you even if it's 14, or 18, or 30, based on the number of unreplaced positions and, and those additional HR considerations, you're going to see a total net savings amount that could differ based, and, and not necessarily be tied to that 22. The 22 is what breaks even with these exact assumptions.
Right.
These assumptions will change when we get down to, to the final list of individuals.
And Ms. Kimmel, at that point in time, when it's all said and done, will that come back to the board?
It will. I think we have a timeline and a couple slides here.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Just a quick bit, in terms of initial communication, because this is a voluntary program, dissemination of the program and knowledge of it is, is most important. Protections and contractual guidance is provided really through the board resolution that the board will take action on at a later date. A general announcement will go out to all employees announcing eligibility, what the program looks like, and in most cases, and I definitely think in this case, we'd like to collaborate with the union to make a similar simultaneous announcement so that basically their constituents are getting this information from multiple sources. This is the proposed timeline Karen was looking at. For today, this is the review or informational item only. On October 6th, the board will be asked to take action regarding the resolution that would approve this offer. October 7th, announcement letters would go out. We will then do, and I'll go a little bit more into this, group and individual counseling sessions the week of October 19th and 26th. This would then leave the remainder of the fall through Christmas break for individuals to work with their respective pension systems, or in this case, just STIRS, to get their pension readouts, talk to their family, and, and do those things that are necessary to help them make a retirement decision. After they come back from that Christmas break, we're asking that the retirements be submitted in the way of forms and letters of resignation to the district office by January 8th, for closing business on January 8th. There'll then be a seven-day rescinding window for those with, you know, I joke, but buyer's remorse. They can come back and rescind their resignation in that seven-day window. After that, we will then close and work on the final assumptions for the analysis that will be delivered to the board January 26th. This is when the board and, and the organization will make a decision whether it wants to move forward. If it does decide to move forward, these employees would retire, basically effective either the end of January, all the way through June 30th, with payments under this program beginning in August 1st of 2025. Enrollment, you know, it looks like I'm going to go a little past this, but if you don't mind, yes. From an enrollment standpoint, the employees are going to be given really two major education opportunities. The first is going to be a group session. These are two-hour sessions done by Keenan, as well as we coordinate with a STIRS representative, the first hour being Keenan doing education on the HRA and the annuity, or really the financial benefit, and then the second being a STIRS rep doing a presentation on the pension system as that is the primary source of income in retirement. And this, that kind of speaks to, to that, we can go forward. The last, you know, and, and really the, the personal piece of this, as we've gone through this process and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not able to speak so much about the decision to, of retirement as I'm, I'm pretty far away from being able to, to retire here, but the reality is, is being involved with these programs, we've seen that, we call it the 80/20 rule, retirement's 80% emotional and 20% financial. What we do with aid individuals in making this very large decision, in many cases, some of the, the largest decisions they've had to make in their lives, we provide a personal touch, which is individual counseling sessions. These are 45-minute sessions with a counselor. Our counselors are former STIRS or PERS employees. For your organization, we would be using basically former K-12 HR officials who were involved with the development and the implementation of a SERP at their former districts, have now retired and have received one of these benefits and, and had come on to help others evaluate their retirement decision. So again, these are not financial advisors, they are previous teachers and CSCA. They are previous teachers and CSCA or classified members. Just to cap this off, you know, we kind of say this is joking, it's not our first rodeo. We do this with about 21 districts a year since 1984, and this is actually a little old. We're closer to a little over 450 of these plans, and they've saved, you know, in our projections, about a little over $700 million for California public agencies over the last, call it, 35 to 36 years. So that was very quick, and it threw out a lot of information. Are there any questions?
Any other questions, Board? Student Board member? Interesting, you're not anywhere close to this. So, wow. Mr. Muzokawa, you did an excellent presentation. It was very easy to understand all this very complicated stuff. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate you taking the time and explaining this to us. So employees, anybody listening, here you go. You get to sign up for this once-in-a-lifetime great plan. So Ms. Kimmel, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yes, and we'll be bringing it back at the next board meeting for the board to officially approve the program.
Absolutely. Thank you again for joining us, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. You too. Take care.
Thanks.
Next is enrollment and staffing report.
Fourth quarter in the Clippers game, Mr. Seifert, no pressure. Good luck with your item here.
Quite an effort here. Madam President, members of the board, before going into the slides, wanted to start off with a couple of things. One, credit to everyone who is involved in this past month. It's really been a truly incredible lift on behalf of our school sites, educational services, our business and personnel departments, as it relates to staffing for the 2020-21 school year. Circumstances unlike any other, particularly with the virtual academy. Enrollment being closed for that on July 24th really was a four-month process transformed into two weeks. So credit to everybody that was involved. And second thing I will share, always like to manage expectations. I don't have tremendously positive news to share with our enrollment as far as the slide that you see there. So you see the bullet points and you see the notable shifts from the prior year. We have an enrollment decrease, particularly in the area of TK and kindergarten, also in third grade. And also, you see in the secondary levels as well, down 80 in seventh grade, 102 at the 10th grade level. And you also see a little bit, we're below projections as well. So I believe, doing some quick Steve map there, it looks like 213 below what we thought from June to August. Going into our actual staffing and enrollment pieces, first of all, very excited to welcome aboard new team members, as we always are, administration, also our speech and language teacher, three special education teachers, and two secondary math teachers, both over at Cal Vassus High School. Also, this is a big credit to everyone involved in this effort. In a time where we really need substitute teachers, we really need them to be trained in the virtual environment, we're able to add 15 new substitute teachers to our substitute list during the last six weeks. Did an interview with some administrators with just 10 new ones last week, getting them onboard. And they're also, credit to our educational services department, for the first time receiving ongoing virtual learning training to help support our certificated staff members. Going into our class sizes, I'll go through these pretty quickly, but of course, we'd welcome any questions at the end of the slides. Our kinder classes are looking at an overall average of 22. Our first-grade classes are looking at an overall average of 21. Our second-grade classes are looking at an overall average of 23. Third grade, an overall average of 25. Fourth grade and fifth grade are both in the 30 and 29 range. Couple notes on that slide, you see a couple outliers up there at the top. Those are from Mariposa. Mariposa has a different staffing model for K through, excuse me, through, four, four through five. They have a different staffing model, which is why you see those two outliers in both the fourth and fifth grade slides. Jumping in to the secondary level, we like to do two things here. We go through this with the board every year. Look at our secondary academic core classes that are over 40. This year, team did an amazing job, especially considering the virtual academy only have five. And among those five, the tops, I believe, are at 42, which for this point in the school year is phenomenal, especially if you consider the added component of the virtual academy. Those classes, just to give you an idea, you can see up there a little bit in AE Wright, a little bit in the virtual academy. And again, just reiterating that, overall, our largest core class is at 42. This slide is one, you know, this is one where you want to look at and say, hey, look, we also have a component to be fiscally responsible. This number is a little bit higher than we would like for core academic classes under 25. Two major components here. One is the enrollment decrease that did get us a little bit in this area, so you will see a little bit more in this area as far as classes under 25. And the second piece is the virtual academy. Really want to emphasize the impact that that has on a master schedule, particularly with Singleton classes. And that created a little bit of a challenge here, where we do have some smaller class sizes, more so than we would in a typical school year. And then this slide can kind of give you an idea of what classes those are, various things from across the board in, you know, different sites and in the virtual academy. Jumping into special situations, this was another piece that was impacted by the virtual academy. So when you take 20% of your enrollment and you put it into the virtual academy at the elementary level, this did leave us with more combination classes than we typically would see. You have a list up there of what exactly those classes are and at what sites those are at. And then in addition, typically, we have eight TK classes. This year, we have nine, with the ninth class being in the virtual academy. Question that has come up a lot and will continue to come up as we get if and when we do have the opportunity to come back on campus, what the heck happens with your staffing? And it is, I think, going to be a very complex thing for us to work with. You know, again, if I were to make a crystal ball prediction, I'd be wrong, so we're not going to do that here. But would want to share that our core principles are to maintain the staff, the staffing as it currently is with the folks that are in-person and the folks that are in the virtual academy. And that is to not cause a large disruption to our school sites. And we feel like at each of our sites, whether you're talking, you know, elementary, whether you're talking secondary, we do have the ability to accommodate moderate fluctuation. However, do want to say that with the caveat that if we have a large-scale shift, you know, hypothetical, there's a vaccine, bam, everybody wants to come back on campus, that would really involve an overhaul of the master schedule. So do we anticipate that? No, but I think it's always important to, you know, manage expectations and share. You know, anything's possible, but we hope to not have major disruptions.
Can I ask a specific question on that? Like, just like a hypothetical. So my daughter has a middle school class of 42 students. If we are somehow able to come back and we decide that we're going to go to a split schedule to try to drop the student-to-teacher ratio down to an acceptable number, I still think 21 students is too many in a classroom, we're trying to do that, what is our model for the classes that are over 40? As we, and there's a number of them here, as you noted, what are we, how are we thinking about how we would bring just that, that size back when we're trying to keep these classes to under 15 students in a classroom from a spacing perspective?
Well, I think that's an outlier in that your daughter's part of a special program. So I think it's, that may skew things the other way, right?
Well, go back and take a look. We have a number of classes.
Yeah, no, I see them.
So it's not just gate. There's, the slide showed us a number, we have a number of multiple campuses that are over 40. So I'm just wondering, what's, what's the plan for those? Like, what's the thinking if we're able to come back? How do we manage that?
That's something we do in accordance with, you know, county's guidelines, safety guidelines. You know, if you look at it right now, the, the group that they're talking about bringing back is TK through five, reason being, those class sizes are quite a bit smaller. To your point, Mr. Lawrence, if you're looking at classes that are in the 40, you cut that in half, it's still 20 students, very tough to maintain six feet. So that is something that we'd have to do in accordance with those county guidelines. Right now, you know, I think we're more focused on our TK through five situation.
Also, Mr. Lawrence, we'd look at other spaces. You take them outside of the classroom, standard classroom, we've got some larger spaces. The good news is, as Mr. Seifert began, generally speaking, our enrollment's down in our 40s and over are down, but we'd have to get creative and utilize other additional spaces. So if you did have 20 or 21 students at one time, they would not be in a standard classroom.
And the numbers dropped hugely. I mean, remember the year we had so many over?
21 high schools.
Yeah, yes. So if you look, we're, we're in better position than we've ever been in terms of high number classes.
Correct.
Yeah.
And to that point, it's a nice segue to the next slide. The numbers are very difficult to see. What I'll share, the main takeaway from that, and what I think we really need to be aware of is, and Ms. Kimmel, I think, said it earlier, we are looking at a, right now for 2021, a 4.9% decrease in enrollment. So, you know, does that help right now with smaller class sizes? Sure, absolutely, but it does create a potential staffing challenge as we look forward to 21, 22. You know, it's anyone's guess what will happen with enrollment moving forward, but important to note that this could create fiscal and staffing challenges as we look towards future years.
I get why we think 10th grade has had such a large drop. I get why kindergarten's dropped, because I know lots of people are pulling their kids out, putting them into in-person kindergarten, you know, or keeping them back for next year preschool. What's driving the decrease in 10th grade?
Let's, let's go back a couple of slides, if we could, to slide 17.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's like the opposite of a bubble moving.
Right. So what I'd like, the best way to look at this, aside from the overall decrease of 537 students from last year, is if you, for example, look at sixth grade in the 1920 year, you had 844 students, then you take a little diagonal look at the next year, and the same cohort of seventh graders is 823 students. So I think, Mr. Lawrence, to your question, we had a bubble last year in 10th grade, but you need to look at the ninth grade class of 940 to see that that dropped to 905 this year. So we took some losses almost in every grade level, but you can see a sort of your, our lost opportunity is more looking at that diagonal trend as opposed to a straight trend across.
I see. That's helpful.
Okay. So that, this is an overview over the last 10 years by grade level for the board to have for reference. And in the next slide, we have the overview for the same time period by school site. So again, similar trends you're able to track and see as well. And then, Mr. Seifert, we've got the chart that shows just graphically an interpretation of our reduction in our enrollment. And just an added slide, this year, we did break down what our enrollment is between the on-campus and the virtual election, so we have that available as well.
And Ms. Kimmel, you're going to take us home with the last slide as well?
Oh, definitely.
Just to ask, so no anomalies that jumped out at you that were non-longitudinally expected, where we, you know, anticipated because we had year-over-year, like, except for kindergarten, put that one aside?
Yeah, we were expecting, yeah, we were expecting actually a little bump in kindergarten. We had some space in some of our schools, and we're hoping to add an additional class, and that didn't happen. The opposite happened. And again, Mariposa, we, we had a definite drop on that campus as well. And then the rest, I think, you know, was pretty much, you know, lost opportunity across the board with families making different choices or moving out of the area due to the crisis. So I did have one last slide. We really did a push a few years back to provide opportunities to our residents to be able to elect different schools within our district. And it's shocking how consistent our families are. And year-over-year, about 15% of them elect to go to a school other than their homeschool. So just food for thought, additional information here.
It is so interesting. You're right.
It's so interesting.
And that concludes our information, unless, of course, there are questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board, student board member? I always find this report very interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I went over some of my questions with you earlier, so it's just always an interesting report and how the numbers work.
Yeah, and we appreciate it. And again, echoed what I said in the beginning, kudos to all the folks that made this happen to get the year started, especially under these crazy conditions.
And I, I really, my hat is off to everyone who worked on the schedules, because to have so few classes, just over 40 in a, in a tumultuous year like this, with so many unknowns walking into the school year, and plus a virtual academy master schedule, and all the last-minute having to put together master schedules. And thank you to everyone who, who, you know, burned the midnight oil to get this all done. This is, this is incredible work.
Can I ask just a random question on this slide?
Absolutely.
I thought Mariposa was 100% school of choice.
Uh, no, I think increasingly, it's much, it's more.
It hasn't been for, for a few years, correct?
It's nobody's home campus. We removed it as a home campus, so it's not a home campus for any student.
No, Sumac is on here.
Didn't we take?
Are we talking about Mariposa or?
Mariposa.
Mariposa, the, the inverse is the out-of-district student.
The what?
The, the.
Okay, so, so it's 100% school of choice or, or permit?
Right.
Correct. Right.
Okay. And what about Sumac? Sumac could be fourth and fifth, if still not, right? Because those are the ones where you could still have it as your local school?
Yes.
So that never should be higher.
If you're in the Sumac, the old Sumac area, you're now considered a Willow family, so you're, you do not file for a school of choice permit.
Right.
But you have many students at Sumac that are, you know, choicing in from other areas of the district. And there's still, I believe, fourth and fifth grade at Willow. There's a couple grades where Sumac still has resident students, so we're not 100% to that transition yet.
Yeah, correct. Ms. Kimmel's accurate, fourth and fifth.
So, so this slide, so this slide is only talking about a percentage of students on that campus who are LDUSE students, who, who moved over to this as their school of choice. This is not out-of-district permits.
Right. School of choice, not.
Yes, correct. Just school of choice.
So I just, I'm just like, I like to track things longitudinally over time, but it seems like Sumac should be higher. But I don't think the campus is, is 70% out-of-district permits.
Not at Sumac, no. The, the balance is many, many, you know, students in that attendance area. So Sumac, the whole Sumac-Willow area is now one attendance area, so they're just selecting their school.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Stepanowski, we are moving right along to continuing on with the fall planning update for when we do return to school campuses.
Madam President, members of the board, it is late, but again, we mentioned at the top of the meeting, we have great appreciation for staff, students, and parents, far from optimal, but given our daunting circumstance, we do appreciate all the hard work and the implementation of lessons learned from the spring and a materially improved distance learning experience for our students. And that is all thanks to our staff, hard work, and ed services providing support. Next slide. We continue to monitor our, our health metrics. I spend way more time on them than I ever thought. I wish I'd got my brother's medical degree at this point. My experience in the Navy and my medical connections have served me better as a superintendent than everything else I've done in my 25-year career. Los Angeles County is in purple, there's a four-tiered system. I don't quite understand the colors, but purple, red, orange, and yellow. We are in purple, and once we meet the metrics to leave, which is the very next slide, Mr. Klein, we have to stay there for 14 days. Very interesting, the state, sort of as we got close to applying for waivers, sort of the state pulled the rug out from under us, and the county pulled the rug out from under us and changed all the metrics. I now have more clarity on those metrics, which we can share in a few minutes. So we are in the purple, only because of our cases. Our positivity rate is actually in moderate. Our positivity rate is below that 4.9%. Got those numbers in a second. So tremendous progression since mid-July. This is almost an extremely dramatic turnaround for LA County and much of California. So we have a chance, I think, by next week to be below that seven, and then we've got a 14-day waiting period. Part of the slowdown was that the county was giving us daily health metrics, which I appreciated. The state has now shifted to updates on Tuesday only. Next slide, Mr. Klein, shows the metrics from last. only. Next slide, Mr. Klein, shows the metrics from last week to this week. You've got a date on there, was it September 8th and then today? So on the left-hand side, you see statewide metrics. The state was looking at six health metrics. They're down to two now. They abandoned metrics such as hospitalizations, availability, beds availability, ICUs, ventilators, and testing. Last two left are the cases per 100,000 and positivity rate. Positivity rate has always been the indicator that I watch the most. That really tells you where you are going. And so even in a week's time, the state has had a dramatic increase. Again, mid-July, we were, county was over 10%, and probably close to about 15 cases per 100,000. So the, so good news. The state, you can see the colors there. The vast majority of the state is in widespread, some sections of Northern California in moderate, and Orange County just tipped into substantial. Next slide, Mr. Klein. Okay, this is updates of the positivity rate. Let's see. So the state does not track the data, which is very difficult, so I've begun my own chart, so we can follow it as it moves along. And so the new metrics came out September 1st, and you can see LA positivity rate went from 5.5, which is already down from 10 in mid-July, to 3.22% just today, which is phenomenal, absolutely best. Basically, the metrics today are the best since they've been in really late March, early April, which is good news. Ventura County trending down as well, a little, but stunningly, LA County has passed Ventura County with their positivity rate. And then even LA County has passed the entire state in their positivity rate. So great news there. And as I said, at 3.2, that puts us into tier three, which is that moderate range, down below 4.9%. So we're actually even getting close to minimal. So very exciting there. Next slide, Mr. Klein. Case rate, again, good news here. We went from 11 on September 1st. We've basically been dropping one per week, essentially, even more than 1.1 per week, almost 1.5. This, the shift here is, it used to be a 14-day running number. This is a one-day number. Now, the state also was clever, I guess is the nicest way I could put it. They are taking the numbers from Monday. Monday are the worst numbers, because you end up with many numbers, unreported numbers spilling over onto Monday. So really, these are the worst-case possible metrics, and this is a crash course in things the state does and doesn't tell you right now. So good news there. Again, if that continues at a 1.5 or so, we'll see. We had Labor Day. Weather conditions weren't optimal. I think we had, what, 121 degrees in Woodland Hills, so I think a lot of people stayed home. I don't think there was a lot of barbecuing in the backyard. I didn't want to get near my grill and be outside, so hopefully we'll have a better experience than we had in Memorial Day and July 4th. Those did not set us up for success.
So Dr. Stepanowski, they are, they are talking about projecting November. So with your crystal ball and basically with all the numbers that you are seeing, we have to meet a certain threshold and stay there for two weeks before we open. So theoretically, in giving students, parents, and staff notice to come back, you know, and this is all hypothetical, basically, it's, I would assume it would start with waivers first. You know, they don't want to just open it up for pre-K through 12th grade, right? I don't think there's been any indication to do that. So assuming they start with pre-K through 6th grade, you know, we could, we would get at least a two-week leeway, right, to give everybody notice to get their childcare in order and work hours and... There was an answer, yeah.
Should you be asking me to make a prediction on what I think will happen? I guess, is that where it was kind of?
Yeah, I guess so. You know, kind of what you're thinking is, is you're seeing all these numbers.
I'm very encouraged by the numbers I see here. I am concerned by the numbers I see in Ventura and Orange County, honestly, states that are a little further ahead of us. I had friends in Orange County. My brother and his family are in San Diego County, so San Diego County actually popped up at 8.1%, if you go to the web to watch this. So San Diego, Ventura, and Orange County, some of their metrics are now worse than LA County. So I think certainly LA County, in speaking with some of our county supervisors, there's extreme reluctance to move forward based on what we experienced in July. I appreciate that. None of us want to snap back into a closed-down situation. Obviously, you worry about a second wave. I think I have a slide later on. Medically, I don't know if many people know this or not, but the Earth's axis tilts a little bit, Mr. Gleason. This is physics, right? This is not chemistry. In physics, the Earth wobbles a little bit, and in the summertime, we sort of, the Earth tilts a little or wobbles a little closer to the Sun. If you want to be completely confused, if I could be a physics teacher for a second, the Earth is actually further away from the Sun in the summertime, but the temperatures are up simply because of that tilt forward, and the Sun's rays coming through less atmosphere and being bounced off less. So you think you get closer to the Sun, you get hotter. Actually, Earth does wobble a little further away. Anyway, sorry, enough physics. In the, in our summer, the Southern Hemisphere is experiencing winter, and so our medical professionals watch closely for the flu trends. We get our flu vaccine based on what happens down there, Australia, New Zealand, those places. So their flu season is April through September. And that's where our medical professionals determine which flu strand to pick up. They have said, and they've watched the flu down there very carefully, because they were worried about, you know, a flu on top of coronavirus. They have seen the lowest flu transmission rates in 50 years in the Southern Hemisphere. That's great news for us.
Yeah.
Distancing matters, and distancing is impactful for COVID, and distancing is impactful for flu. So I'm optimistic if we reopen in an intelligent fashion. If we open up malls and bars and restaurants and bowling alleys, that's, we're going to have a problem. I would prefer to see a priority on schools and certainly K-5. I don't know, you know, certainly there's a lot of pressure on the impacts of the economy and people who own those different businesses and work there, and I am very sympathetic to that.
Yeah.
Can you share why then Orange County, if their numbers are going that direction, approved 40 school districts to open?
I've got a slide for that, and they've approved way more than 40. I think it's closer to 130. But their metrics started, turned around this week, actually. Their metrics have been trending well up until today, honestly. Today, they took a turnaround. I've been emailing my superintendent, now superintendent friend in Los Alamos. They opened up for K-5 Public Unified District. They opened up on September 8th. They've had a good experience. I asked them a whole bunch of detailed questions, haven't heard back, but they have stayed open. They haven't had incidents. They haven't had problems. People have followed the protocol, so it's going well. But the more things you open up, whether it's schools or movie theaters or malls, you're going to see an increase in case rates. I think
Yeah.
we can do a much better job with K-5 than universities have experienced.
Yes.
You know, our students aren't out at restaurants. There isn't the socialization. They aren't young adults of legal age. They're going home and being with their parents and behaving and making good choices and being safe. And so I think we can have a much better experience and success rate and be much safer than what we've seen in universities across the country.
I agree with you. I think it's all about how thoughtful you are and the protocols you put in place. And, you know, some of the unintended consequences of this is the craziness of what is open and what isn't. You know, for instance, my hairdresser was talking to me about, to get your hairdressing license in the state of California, you are examined and tested, really, on protocols of hygiene, how not to, you know, blind your person with chemicals, how to make sure it's clean for the next client, how you don't cross-contaminate, you know, utensils. And so he said, for him, it's crazy that he could go to Walmart, but he's not allowed to practice when he's been licensed by the state of California and examined on his knowledge of hygiene and public health. And I think, you know, opening schools sounds scary until we talk about all the things that we're doing. And so that, for me, is what calms me down, is I know that the district has been putting things in place. We've been buying things. We've invested things. So it's the thoughtfulness of when and how you open. And I'd really love to hear from Noah on this about, you know, kids and wanting to get back to school and the impact and, and just, you know, talk to us about what's going on with you and your friends and what you're hearing.
I mean, pretty much every kid wants to go back. It's, we're just kind of tired of being at home. I, for one, don't like Zoom or learning from home. I feel like it's really distracting in many ways. And we just, I mean, we want to go back, but everybody, we want to make sure that it's as safe as possible
Yeah.
for the kid to get back, which is, I don't know, it's going to be hard to do. You're going to have to keep looking at all these numbers and stuff.
Right.
You know?
Right. I think what we have to do is always have that, I mean, I find it worrying, but at some point, the conversation changed to opening nothing up if there can even be one person get ill. And that's not realistic either. So, you know, I worry a lot about mental health and, you know, there was quite an exhaustive article in the Wall Street Journal about adolescent girls who are social creatures and what's happening with them, because when they're left at home, they're left with two things, texting and social media. What are the two worst things for their self-esteem and their, their general well-being? Texting and social media. So I'm concerned about our special needs students. I think about them every day. How are we getting them the services? I know that Ms. Falk and her team are just going above and beyond, but some of those kids need their services here. So I appreciate how thoughtful we are about this, and I'm frustrated that the county continue to sort of move goalposts and ignore the private schools that are opening all around us.
Well, and you talked about the equity matter and how, you know, this is creating a divide as to who receives education.
It's probably the, yes, the one question.
And private schools are finding loopholes that are unfair to the general population.
Yep.
I get, I get people who ask me and say, I can spend, you know, almost $900 a month to drop my kid off somewhere for the day, where someone will walk them through their lost virginist school program. So I'm paying my property taxes for public school, but now I'm going to pay, and I worry about the families who can't pay. And I have no answers for these people. They think it's unfair, and I'm right there with them. I think it's terrible, too. You know, there's a, there was a retired or credentialed, not working teacher who was advertising a pod in my neighborhood, and I crunched the numbers of the students she was taking, and I'm like, she's pulling in $12,000 a month doing this? And who, what about the families who can't afford to do that? And I seriously think if you really wanted to, like, undermine public education and the integrity of it, this would be how I'd start. So I don't get how this squares with the equity of those who are running things at all.
Mr. Lawrence?
I agree.
Can we, Mr. Gleason, can we put in an ad here for our pre-tutering while we're talking about, you know, something?
We have a slide for that.
I think the, I couldn't agree with what everybody said, but I think we should be more pointed, more direct. We have local elected officials, like our county supervisor, who does not support allowing our local school district to open our schools. All stop. She's not representing her community. It's just a simple fact. And those type, that mindset is establishing a separate and unequal school system for rich kids versus poor kids, and we need to call that out when we see it. That's our responsibility as elected officials. We have, we have a county that is putting in place a one-size-fits-all approach for a multimillion-dollar school, a multimillion-school population, which makes no sense. We are, we are an hour drive away from other schools in LA County, yet we're being held to the same type of standards from a, from a infection rate as something that is over an hour-plus away, where members of our community are not regularly traveling to. It is beyond obscene, and it's completely upsetting to me that they are allowing private schools in our community that charge $35,000 a year to have kids dropped off on their campus, where no quote-unquote instruction will happen, but the teachers will zoom into that classroom from next door. That is, on its face, beyond obscene, and literally, every county employee and at the Board of Education and county supervisor should be ashamed of themselves for allowing this to happen. It's enough. I appreciate that we're trying to play nice and get things done, but at some point in time, we have to say, you are causing a significant detriment to our students. There are those kids who are lower socioeconomic. Every study has shown, the American County PDA Act has shown, that minority students, those are lower socioeconomic as well, are disproportionately impacted by staying at home, because both parents, by and large, or all of the parents in the house, work. In many cases, they work from jobs they can't do from a Zoom environment, so those parents have to leave. So you have middle school and high school kids, home alone. This has got to be fixed. And I appreciate that our district is doing everything we can to advocate for it, but people need to rile up at this point at their county supervisors and their county Board of Education and say, enough. You cannot have a one-size-fits-all approach for a district as broad and diverse as, county is broad and diverse than LA County. It's just obscene.
And my, my big issue is, right now, is, you know, if it's safe enough for private schools around us, in our neighborhoods and around us, to open, then it's safe enough for us to open. We have, as we will see, as in this presentation, prepared for a safe opening, staggered schedule, spreading students out by distance, and I don't, I don't understand. It's a health ordinance where we cannot be open, and that is for all schools, and they are completely turning, turning a blind eye to private schools and not allowing us to open. And it's, it's very.
And not even replying to our attempts to contact.
Right. When the Board of Education, the Board President is emailing and receiving no response from Sheila Kuehl, it is, and just, like I said, I don't want schools to be shut down if they don't have to. Again, and Dr. Step, I'll let you go on with your presentation, but you can see this board is just furious over the double standard and how this is affecting children. This is really, really hurting kids to be isolated, and if it's safe enough for private schools in our neighborhoods to open, it's safe enough for us, and I don't understand it. So we will continue to advocate for our community and for our kids. That's my buzzer to stop talking. Dr. Step, go.
My three minutes are up.
The board has spoken forcefully and advocated and reached out, and I appreciate it, and those efforts are ongoing. And I had conversations with Supervisor Kuehl's staff today, and will continue those, and they were disappointing. Not to rile the board up further, but the equity issue expands beyond that, which I shared with the supervisor and LA County Public Health official, and we've emailed the question to Dr. Farrar, which hopefully she will answer this Thursday at 8:30 in the morning. By allowing or turning a blind eye to the privates that are opening, it's a good chance that it'll increase cases and force public to stay closed longer.
It's going to mess our metrics.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, absolutely.
So.
Well, and not to.
I honestly don't see how Sheila Kuehl and her team of just completely derelict elected officials are not facing civil rights lawsuit for what they're doing. I mean, this is creating a separate and unequal school system. They're not doing it by default. They are, they are choosing to do this. This is a choice, and I don't understand how that's not illegal.
I don't, I don't either.
I mean, restaurants, where you cannot eat indoors, if they violate it, they get the water turned off. And they, they know that schools are operating. They know it.
We keep telling them. We keep reporting them.
Well.
Anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
Dr. Step, continue.
The city wants to overreach that our cities don't in terms of having power over their water and power. LA City does, that our local cities don't.
No, they do not.
But I think that our, you know, from conversations we've had with our electeds in the cities surrounding us, the four cities of our district, I think, you know, they share this concern so deeply.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We all do. Thank you, thank you all. We will continue to advocate for our community. And Dr. Step, please continue. A little board trending there.
So the state was very confusing, and finally, one of the, I think it was Dr. Gilchrist from LA County, Ms. Kimmel's nodding, explained to us, because they shifted from 200 and 100 to 7, 8, 9, and 5. So what they were doing with the 200 and the 100 was a 14-day cumulative average. So if you, at 200, you're allowed to apply for waivers. Of course, LA County said, no, thank you. At 100, K-12 schools could open, P-12 schools could open. So if you take that 100 days and divide it by 14 at the bottom there, there's a math and physics lesson today, you end up with your 7.14. So it's basically 98 cases, you know, over 14 days or seven in any one given day. And of course, again, they chose Monday, which is the highest case rate of every day of the week, significantly higher than Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So that's where we get the new structure, which I wish the state had been a little clearer on explaining, but the bottom line is, it is similar to the old structure. I was interested or concerned that they may have increased the health standard by a factor of 14. Look, everyone wants things to be safer. That's a dramatic change as we contemplated and began our waiver. Next slide, Mr. Klein. Next slide, Mr. Klein. So, in LA County, right now, we have 55 schools that are open, 40 of them are public and 15 are private, and this is approved. This is not the private schools that are closed. Now, this is schools that are supposed to be, and I think the vast majority are, providing instruction to students with special needs and EL students. And so, these schools are the ones, both 40 public and 15 private, that have gone through the process of applying for a reopening plan for their students with special needs. The privates is interesting, and some of the names on the list are fascinating also as they know their populations with, their population of students with special needs are very, very small, and we end up servicing a lot of those. So, that was a little bit fascinating to see some of the names on the list. Next slide, Mr. Klein. Obviously, what can people do to help us out? Wear those masks, wash those hands, avoid those crowds, and maintain that distance. It's not, not rocket science. Next, Mr. Klein. Flu shots, flu season's coming up. Everyone says, when should I get the flu? Really, they recommend, really before October 31st. We're bringing Flu Clinic to Los Virginas. I mentioned Australia's flu season. Good news, good news from Down Under is best one in 50 years. Hopefully, we can replicate that. Mr. Klein. If people are confused, a little bit of the waiver, it's only for TK through 6, transition kindergarten through 6th grade. It is not available for 7 through 12. And really, I believe their, their thinking was that TK through 6 are the least independent learners, most impacted by distance learning, but that's a little bit of the why. Next slide, Mr. Klein. Just an update on what's going on in LA County. Let's see here, oh, sorry, statewide. So, a total of 500, 501 waivers have been submitted, the vast majority approved across the state. 22 schools, that's hot off the press, it went from 18 to 22 today. 22 schools in Ventura have applied, all have been approved. Moore Park Unified tonight voted 5-0 to move forward with their waiver process. CNI is going to be exploring the issue going forward. They are not expected at this point to apply for a waiver, and will continue to dialogue with our other districts. I don't know where Cana was headed. Obviously, they are under a certain amount of pressure with 22, all private schools surrounding them that are open and offering instruction. I think the closest to Los Virginas would be La Reina. In Orange County, the number I checked today is up to 135. The state website's probably a couple of days old, so that number's probably older. But 135 schools in Orange County have been approved, applied, and all of them were approved. Next slide, Mr. Klein.
Dan, the ones that have been approved, when are they opening?
Good question. It's not clear on the website. A number of them were opening September 8th, like I said, Los Alamos. I believe, I believe Orange County had a bunch opening on the 14th and 22nd, but I don't have the specific details of which of the 22 started when. All 22 will be up and operational by next week. Some, for example, like La Reina, I think La Reina is only 6th grade through 12th grade, so they only are bringing in a 6th grade, the only grade that could come in. Part of the application, of course, is the reopening plan, 29-page plan. Ms. Kimmel has crushed that. It looks phenomenal. Other parts are our local health metrics. They have honestly been good throughout this pandemic, and good, it being, good being probably the word I shouldn't use, but above the experiences of other regions in our state and country, no cases are acceptable and good. But locally, we have experienced better, way better than average numbers, certainly now also. So, that, I think, is the biggest driver. And letters of support are the final piece. We have a number of letters from Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, West Hills Hospital, and 13 of our 14 schools signed on, their PFC leadership, PFA leadership signed on to support our letter as well. We appreciate that. Many of those schools surveyed their parents, and the results landed about 80/20, parents wanting to be on campus. Next slide. We continue to work hard. We've shared this before, really, since March 13th, we've been working hard to be back on campus. $1.6 million in improvements and upgrades. We're serious about it, so each chance we get, we do want to tell the story of the work we've done to ensure our staff and students are safe. There is, there is a whiplash factor, getting back to Ms. Stein's question earlier. I do see the metrics getting better, and so then I hear, you know, as it looks like we may be getting closer to opening, we hear from parents who are concerned and don't want us opening, when it looks like we're further away, and the county says, you know, slams the door on waiver applications in consideration, we hear from parents who, you know, are struggling with this distance learning. So, it really is whiplash for our community, our parents, our staff. I am concerned by the increasing numbers in Orange and Ventura County that LA will not, will reopen without a focus on schools, and, and we could see an increase in our numbers. We'll see. There is good vaccine information. A number of companies think they will have a vaccine that looks good in October. Now, they've got a mask, first, they've got to determine it's effective and safe, and so a number of companies are contemplating that it's possible in October to have that information, then, of course, you've got to work on mass production and mass distribution, and that all takes a significant amount of time. Next slide. Dr. Finneran, all you.
All right. So, I'm taking over partially from Ms. Kimmel because she is microphoneless over there. So, just wanted to speak to some of the safety preparation that has been ongoing and pretty intensive and extensive for the last several months. Each school site has a startup kit that has hundreds of items in it. You'll see the list there. This is funded through CARES Act dollars. Classrooms are being prepared. You can go to the next slide, Mr. Klein. Class sites are being, classrooms are being prepared, and this is an example of buckets of PPE for our special education staff that are assessing students. And then that's an example on the right-hand side of Dr. Duncan behind one of our acrylic plexiglass shields and doing a mock of an assessment. Next slide. This is one of our teachers at Willow on the left who is working away in her classroom and has been doing assessments. On the right is Chef Allen in her kitchen modeling the appropriate PPE and demonstrating the cleaning, and she is ready for students. Next slide. These are, this is how the desks will appear to students. We're trying to make it as unobtrusive as possible. They'll be marked with blue and orange tape, one for Cohort A, one for Cohort B, or the morning cohort, or the PM cohort, and the cleaning will occur accordingly, you know, to, they'll all be cleaned daily. However, students will not be seated in both sections of the tables simultaneously.
So, you may look at the picture on the left and say, holy smokes, there's too many chairs in there. No, we, students in the morning will use blue, and students in the afternoon will use orange. We want to keep the empty chairs in there to help maintain that distancing, and obviously, in that one-day rotation, we don't want students using the same desk until we get through with our electrostatic cleaners and can disinfect everything.
And then these are just an example of hula hoops that are great tools for distancing and recess kits. Of course, each cohort will have their own kit of play materials so that there's no cross-contamination of germs or materials. The next slide shows we have ordered hundreds and have received, I think the number there is 213, umbrellas to provide additional shade for, we're so fortunate that we live in a place minus the days where it's really hot, but on days where it's more temperate, we can have students outside, which is a really safe and comfortable learning environment. We can provide some shade to cool it off even further, which is what those umbrellas are there. There are also portable sinks that have been ordered and installed to ensure all elementary classrooms have hand-washing stations.
Can you talk a little bit about, I've been talking to some school districts that are in California in warm weather, and they're, they're not kind of leaving it to the individual teachers, but they're actually developing outdoor education spaces for their classes and moving as many of their classes permanently outside for as long as they can. So, it's not like they can be outside if they want, but it's, you know, class is going to meet, and we have, you know, we're not, they're setting up these disparate areas in their outdoor areas for this, or what is our, I feel like our approach is kind of up to the teacher, but I mean, what is our philosophy on, you are right, we're in a space where realistically, probably 90% of the school days between now and December could be had outside. How are we making that not just a possibility, but kind of like, we think they should be outside and we're creating the environment to make that happen?
Great question, Mr. Lawrence. What we'll be doing as we prepare to have students come back to campus is we'll work with our principals on a site basis to have perhaps a more concrete schedule that could be, as an example, a rotation of student, of groups of students outside or classes of students outside. There is a way to have multiple classrooms outside, of course, at many of our school sites, and, but we don't want students mixing, and we don't want them too close to each other, so it would be a site-by-site process, working with our principals.
I mean, have we, I guess what I'm wondering is like, we're blessed that most of our elementary campuses are very large.
Yes.
And you could have all 400 or 500 kids outside all day long, broken up in spacing if we wanted to. I mean, the space is there from an acreage standpoint, on the grass, on the covered area. How are we thinking about that? That's what I'm trying to get at. It seems to me like, I can't think of an elementary school, no, I really can't think of an elementary schools that could not have every kid outside if we created 25, you know, disparate sections that are, that are, you know, tented, and you have desks and have power and those type of things. I'm just trying to think like, what are we, one of the districts I was looking at, they're, they're building these kits where like the power's being run outside, they have projectors, the teacher's able to project on a screen under a tent. It's that level of like, we're going to try to make it as permanent as possible.
Right. So, there's a couple of impediments, I would say, that we have to achieving that. One is DSA, or Department of State Architects approval, for some of those structures. And then, secondly, I would say that there are, there are some sun and heat issues. Let's put aside the heat, but just sun and students and staff being outside for an extended period of time in the sun, even if it's, you know, mildly or somewhat shaded, there are those just factors of being outside.
I will say, Mr. Lawrence, you've been on finance for seven years. Well, I've been on facilities for seven years, and shade is a constant challenge and issue. And as Dr. Finneran said, anything that affixes to a school or a structure is, and it's extraordinary, the cost of these things. So, when we've looked at doing that, sometimes PFCs have helped us. We've, over the years, added shade at most of our campuses, but this was, I hate to say it, a big feature of Measure V, was we looked at outdoor classrooms and how we could, and I, I think every day, how, had we passed that, we would be out there right now, working on these outdoor classrooms and creating these structures. But it's a lot of people to have outside. The sun is a constant issue. There's wind, there's a million distractions for kids. It's, yeah, smoke right now, you wouldn't want kids outside. So, it seems an easy thing, but there's so many other things that go into it, so it's frustrating. I mean, you can do some outside, but.
And I think I, what I want you to, to hear, Mr. Lawrence, is that it's definitely something that is well on our radar, that we've talked with our principals about, that we will work with them to create a detailed plan that works at their school site, that works with the unique needs of their students and their staff, that, that, you know, maximizes the use of our outdoor space, let's say it that way. Great. All right. The next slide is about signage, and those are pictures that I think we've shared previously. And we, of course, have a staff check-in process that's extensive, that's on it, that we all do on a daily basis when we're coming to a work site. And then there are stickers on the floor and painted signs on the floor now and on the concrete at all of our school sites. We also have these electrostatic sprayers, which you've seen before. Here's a few new pictures that I don't think you've seen of them in action. And then these are the larger-capacity ones that maybe you haven't seen yet, that have, they have much longer hoses, and you can have two users, one on either end, and that, those are convenient. You could use them in classrooms, like you see in this picture, or in a space like a gym or an NPR that needs that larger space cleaned.
Of course, anything that involves chemicals is safe to be using on school campus.
That is correct. They have been well-vetted and they're safe.
Can I just ask a broader question about, something I was curious about, because I've just been looking at kind of, as we all have, like what people are doing online in their districts. What is our position on masks in the classroom for like K through 2nd grade versus, I'm seeing some school districts do face shields. I'm seeing other districts doing face shield, the combination of like, like the box we had Steven a minute ago, where they put a box around the desk, a plastic desk, each desk has that. I just, I'm, one of the things I'm seeing from some of these districts is that they're just saying like, this is not realistic to ask a six-year-old to wear a mask for three hours in a classroom. Are we, I know we're talking to medical experts, but I'm just curious, what's our thinking on a face shield, a plastic shield around each desk, something like that, versus asking these kids to be masked in the classroom?
Yes. So, there's a county directive regarding masks, and I believe it's, I cannot remember, is it age six and up?
No, the state said, 2nd grade or below, you don't have to. The county can add on to it. LA County is requiring masks for everybody, so.
Thank you.
And I support that 100%. Kids have to wear masks. It's not great, not easy, but they can do it.
But I guess somebody is like, is a mask the same as a face shield and what the county's saying, and we're saying mask?
Has to be a mask, can't be a face shield.
I'm sorry, what?
Unfortunately, has to be a mask. Face shields don't cut it. The droplets go down, which is the real concern, and the mask also provides protection on the way in.
Kids are better than adults.
Yes. Thank you for the question, Mr. Lawrence. You've, we've informed you about our ultraviolet cleaners, as we're calling them. They are going to be installed by the end of November. They're, they've been ordered. Thank you for your approval on that order about six weeks ago, I believe. And these cleaners destroy coronavirus, among many other things.
Is there a reason why that, I thought these were coming in, going to be installed in October?
No, I don't think we had ever expected them to be here.
Wasn't that delayed at the fort? Wasn't this one of the things that, oh, no, weren't these part of what was delayed at the fort?
No, I think.
Especially it's not a no-bid approval, I thought, right, to get them, and I thought they were going to be in by, the installation was going to start in October.
I think it was a six-to-eight-week order process, and, and then installation comes in after that. So, we should receive them, Ms. Kimmel, by the end of October? Is that correct? And, and then they should be installed by the end of November. I think what we're saying is that's our target completion date for installation across the district. So, they could start as soon as early November, as soon as we get them, we'll begin installing them.
Is there any way to, I mean, that, is there any way to move that faster? I mean, Ms. Kimmel, what, I mean, that.
I can tell just by her eyes. She says, I wish. Everyone wants these, and we ordered them as quickly and as soon as we could.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get my head around. It sounds like the installation's the delay, not the, not the receiving of them.
Well, we'll receive them by the end of October, and then they'll be installed.
It's like a little bit of that.
Do we have, okay. I feel like that's something that, okay, I'd like to find out how we can chat shorter, because if we're trying to get our schools open sooner, that's one of the things we're talking about that we have in place, but if we don't have that in place till December, that seems like a lot longer than we had thought when we voted on this, to expedite it in our previous meeting.
All right. So, the exciting, I think, the most exciting part of this presentation is related to the directions that we received from California Department of Public Health, as well as the LA County Department of Public Health regarding bringing subsets of students back to campus in small cohorts. And so, what's important to know here is that CDPH issued guidance, and then, as is and can be the case, LA County Department of Public Health issued more restrictive guidance. And so I think that's a really important thing for the community to understand, is that the state issues guidance, and then our counties, our county departments of public health, do have the authority to issue more restrictive guidance. They cannot be more lenient or more generous than the state guidance, but they can be more restrictive. So this is an example of where we experienced that, in that the LA County Department of Public Health limited us bringing students back who are identified as having individualized education plans and/or who are identified as English learners. I want to be really clear at the outset, this is not a waiver process. There is no application process for this. This is, as long as we follow the directives and the guidance, we are able to execute this plan. It's pretty extensive, and we are adhering, of course, to every detail that we need to, so that we do it right for our staff, our students, and our families. We do have to inform LA County Department of Public Health that we are moving forward with this. So once we have everything situated, we will be pressing send to LA County Department of Public Health on our plans for making this happen. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Falk, who's going to talk in more detail about our plans.
Thank you, Dr. Finneran. Madam President, members of the board, I'm very excited to present this tonight. It's been a long time coming. A lot of parents have reached out to me, a lot of special ed teachers have reached out to me, worried about the population that we serve. So I'm very excited about this. As Dr. Finneran said, LA County made it a little bit more restrictive than the state did. The state guidance was 14 students and two adults, and no more than 25% of your student population on a campus at any one time. LA County lowered that to 12 students and two adults, and no more than 10% of your population on a campus at any one time. So some of our schools are smaller, so we're talking between 39 and 50 students on a campus at any one time. And so we are moving forward with plans. Jim, can you do the next slide, please? Thanks.
If you didn't go to the next one.
I think I talked about that. So a couple of things about the LA County guidance that I didn't cover is, one of the things they allowed us to do that the state did not, is we're not bound by the 12, too. If we have less students, we can have more adults, which is actually really nice, because some of our cohorts are going to be smaller, but some of the students require more one-to-one assistance in terms of adults. So what is a cohort? A cohort is a group of students and adults that maintain their integrity the entire time they're on campus. Cohorts cannot cross. Adults cannot cross. And the only mixing of cohorts that you can do is they do allow a substitute to come into a cohort, should a teacher be out. But all the support services, such as speech and language, adaptive PE, all of those supports cannot push into a cohort. They are allowed to take a student out and deliver one-to-one service. But cohorts cannot be mixed. And so, the next slide, Jim, if you don't mind. Thanks. So we looked at how can we maintain this? How can we do this? Buttercup was actually fairly easy, because Buttercup in and of itself is a cohort. The students don't mix. They're in a classroom with the same staff. So it was relatively easy to work through Buttercup. When we got to elementary school, we looked at, could we maintain those cohorts? And the answer was yes, because we do a learning center model at the elementary school, which means that the students are not in specialized classes. They are pulled out for those services. So we would be able to do the cohorts at the elementary level. When we got to secondary, it was much more difficult, because secondary received their special ed services period by period. And since we could not mix cohorts and we could not mix teachers, there would be no way to deliver the special ed services a student needs and maintain those cohorts. The only way we could do secondary was our specialized programs, because they are self-contained. So that would be our program that serves our moderate-to-severe students, our programs that serve our students with significant social-emotional deficits, and our program that serves students with significant social skills deficits. So we are bringing back Buttercup. We are bringing back kindergarten through fifth grade, all students whose parents opt to have them on, who receive special education services. And at the secondary level, which is middle and high school, we're bringing back all of our students enrolled in special programs.
I think, Ms. Falk, something that, two things. One is, it's important to note that this isn't intended to replace or supersede distance learning. So I think that's an important distinction to make. And also, I didn't want to brush over our English learners. I wanted to mention that we are definitely exploring that possibility. It was on a previous slide, and I didn't mean to skip that bullet. We have about 420 English learners. And secondary would be, again, poses the same challenges that Ms. Falk just referenced. But our elementary, if parents would be willing to transport them to campus, we could provide that English learner support as a supplement to their distance learning. Well, it's integrated into their distance learning. So we're exploring that. And we will have more information for you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the guidance was actually very clear that it is not to replace distance learning. It's meant for limited instruction.
So what does that, so what does that mean? Because I did read that. What does that look like?
Well, it depends who you, it depends who you ask and what it looks like. School districts are interpreting a little different. Law firms are interpreting a little different. What it means is the bulk of the student's day has to remain distance learning. So what we're opting to do is bring our students back for two- or three-hour blocks of time in the morning to deliver all of their special education services. The remainder of their day will be distance learning for general ed or any special education services we were not able to deliver during that two- or three-hour block of time.
Is that what most schools are doing?
Most schools are doing that.
Okay. And what about...
Can you unpack that for a second? Because that seems ridiculous to me. Like, if we're going to bring these kids back to campus and set up this environment, why not provide them the full, I mean, the risk has already been made. So there's no additional risk if they're there for two or four hours. What is the, who's, is that the county or is it the state?
No, that's from the CDPH guidelines, and that remained intact. I believe the thinking behind it, because we've had quite a bit of meetings about it, is they're trying to avoid times during the day, like lunch or nutrition, or times when students are on the playground, where it's going to be impossible or difficult to maintain these very strict cohorts. So I think the thinking behind that was to get these students on campus to deliver services to support distance learning, not to replace distance learning. And I don't agree with you, I mean, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Lawrence, but that's the way that it was written, and we have to follow those guidelines.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm in no way being critical of you or the team. I think it's amazing you're pulling this off. I'm just frustrated that you're being given yet another Sisyphean task of silliness by the government to have to accomplish.
I agree, which is why we made the decision that students will not be on campus at lunch. The cohorts will either occur in the morning before lunch, or there may be one or two cohorts in the afternoon after lunch. No teacher or staff member will be on campus longer than their one cohort. They can choose to remain on campus, like other staff people are, to continue their day via distance learning. Or they can go home and complete their day, like other staff members are, via distance learning. But they will only work with one cohort. Once a cohort starts, and parents might get wind of how great it is and want to come into a cohort, they will not be allowed to do that, because once a cohort is locked, it is locked. So here's the timeline of what we have done so far. I sent out a parent survey last week and gave parents a deadline of Friday. Keeping in mind, and one thing I forgot to mention, the virtual academy kids right now are not, do not have the option to come on campus, because those parents have chose distance. So we're taking those families off the table. Of the approximately 1,400 special education families that we have, we have heard from approximately 700 of them.
Wait, how many do you have total?
We have approximately 1,400. That includes the VA kids. So we have about 250, maybe a little less of VA kids. And that doesn't include the speech-only kids. So we probably roughly have of that 1,400, about 1,100 who are eligible to come back.
And how many, 400?
We've heard about, close to 700 have responded.
Who want?
So that's, so of those 700 that responded, 55% were a yes. Approximately 22% were a maybe. They wanted more information. Only 10% were a solid no, which was really great numbers. The parents who said maybe, I reached out again with an additional survey and addressed the questions that they left as to why the maybe was. And today, we've heard from about, I would say, 60% of those maybes, and they're overwhelmingly changing their decision to yes, which is great.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, we're talking about, it sounds like 800 kids total? No, less than that. You've heard from 700 parents. So 600 kids?
Correct.
Is this, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry. Are we thinking of having all of this happen on one campus for the time being? Or are we going to have them all scattered across every campus in the district?
Right. So they will be served by their special ed teachers at their homeschool. So they will be going to their homeschool for a two- or three-hour block of time in the morning or the afternoon. Will be released either prior to lunch or come back right after lunch, depending on if they're on a morning or an afternoon cohort. But it will be on their campus with their special ed teachers and the specialists who work with them on their campus.
I'm just curious, like, it would seem like that's going to cost us. Let's assume we don't get to open our campuses to other kids in the meantime. It would seem like there's going to be a significantly higher cost to have campus staff, you know, maintenance, whatever else, janitorial, for every single campus to have 25 to 40 kids on them per day versus if we somehow picked one campus while they're all empty and put them there. Is that something we've thought about?
We're limited by the number of kids that can be on.
Correct. Only 10% of the school's population can be on. The other part of that is, teachers are working out of their classrooms anyway, and a lot of elementary teachers are already working out of their classrooms. So the cost of cleaning the classroom is not additional. Transportation is not an issue unless a student already has transportation on their IEP. Very few of our elementary school students have that.
Transportation. So busing, transportation.
We would have to provide that if a student has that on their IEP.
Okay.
Very few elementary schools students have it, but more of the secondary will have it, because we have some specialized programs. So one of the things about transportation is transportation also has to be per cohort. So if I have three programs running at Agora High School for all my three specialized programs, there has to be a bus for each one of those specialized programs. So I can't have an Agora High School bus. It has to be an Agora High School bus for this cohort and all the other cohorts. So there would be some additional costs that we're not doing now for transportation. But the other costs are mitigated by the fact that most teachers are working out of their rooms anyway. So we are cleaning those rooms.
So at this point, have you been in contact with the bus companies and transportation? Okay. So we're going to be ready for that as well?
We're going to be ready for that. We need to let Durham know, because they laid off all of their drivers, so they need to hire drivers back. So we're working with that. So one of the things I forgot to mention early on is, when the state rolled this out, and when LA County rolled this out, which keep in mind was less than a week and a half ago, their target date for schools opening began September 14th. Well, it would be near impossible for a district to get these plans together. My team made the decision that we were going to begin this program October 5th, which is a Monday. And the reason behind that was because we wanted to make sure all of the safety precautions were in place, to give staff time to arrange for childcare or whatever they needed, and to give families enough notice, so that it wasn't like, hey, we're going to open, now you're back in a week. So we were very thoughtful in that, because the safety and, you know, of staff and students is very important to us. So the parent survey went out. I met with the unions, both the classified and the certificating unions. I had a special ed teacher meeting, and I had a principals meeting that first week that this rolled out. This week, I had a peer educator meeting with all the peer educators. I had two Zooms today with about 170 people on. Robbie joined me. Our special ed admin team has been meeting to put together the cohorts. Now that we have the kids in place, we have to look at how many are on each site and how much staff do we need based upon the students who are coming. I can tell you this, most of the cohorts are going to be way less than the 12. We're not having that many parents. The highest school right now is Bay Laurel, and they have, we have 20 families who have indicated they would come back, but we have two teachers there. So we're still talking right now, 10 students and four adults possibly in a cohort. So no other school is that high in terms of the response.
This is giving me chills. This is so exciting, because it's so good for children. Yeah, no, it's, yeah, good chills. It's good for children. So the staff and the teachers that are coming back, and you're having these meetings, they want to come back? They're ready to come back?
They're ready. Oh, they've been reaching out to me, I mean, you know, a long time. When can we get back? We're worried about our kids. I would say more staff reached out to me than parents, because I think parents were reading the paper and knew.
Right.
But staff were very anxious, for the most part, to come back.
Will you please thank them for us? I'm going to cry. I'm like, this is like, this is great. This is the beginning. And they need it.
Well, and if I can say, Ms. Falk, I think this has a lot to do with you and your leadership and the trust in the department in the sense of creating a safe way to bring students back to campus. Not just an opening of campus, but really, like, everything you do, a really thoughtful, all-parties-considered approach. And I'm very grateful. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, some of our students are, you know, unfortunately severely disabled. How are we managing, like, are they required to wear masks? What are we doing to make sure that our teachers are not, that our teachers are, you know, have the safety in the classroom, to make sure they're not, you know, put in an awkward position where they could be, you know, come in contact with COVID?
Great. That's such a great question, and we actually talked about that at my teacher meeting. So LA County is telling us ages two and up need to wear masks. The exception is for students whose disabilities prevent them from wearing a mask. So the first step was when a family reaches out to us, is they have to run through our district nurse, Melissa Foster, who needs to vet out whether or not their disability warrants them not wearing a mask. So that's the first thing. If we have students in a classroom who cannot wear a mask based on their disability, and that will happen, and we have a couple of safety precautions in place. One, we have disposable gowns that that staff can wear. Two, we've ordered medical-grade masks instead of just traditional face masks. So staff who have students who have the inability to wear a mask due to their disability will have medical-grade masks.
They're like N95s?
Similar to that. They're not N95s, because Melissa Foster said they have to be fitted properly, but they're very similar to that. They're actually like surgical masks. And the other thing we've ordered is, besides the plexiglass desks for everybody, we also have rolling plexiglasses that can move around with staff should they need to interact with a student who's not wearing a mask and is moving around a classroom. The other thing we did is we've identified students coming back who we believe, A1 might be a flight risk, because we do have students who run. R2 may have some difficulty transitioning back, and that's going to happen. These kids have been out of school since March. And so to come back and think it's going to be business as usual, it's not. So we're staffing each of our elementary sites with a district behaviorist, who will be outside of the cohort, who will be able to serve the students one-on-one outside of the classroom. So we have a couple of contingencies in place for staff. And like I told staff today, we can't predict everything that's going to happen, but we are ongoing, going to be looking at the safety and effectiveness of the program and working together with them to make sure that all the protocols and processes are in place to ensure their safety and the safety of students.
Thank you for your support of staff, really. I mean, this is such a tough time for everyone.
It is. It is. So the next week, we're going to be looking, reviewing plans to instruct on campus, meeting with teachers again, telling them who their cohorts are, what it's going to look like, rolling out a distance learning plan to families who are coming back, giving the hours that they will be on campus, letting parents know the safety protocols, that students need to be screened prior to coming to school. They will have their temperatures checked when they arrive at school, before even being allowed into the classroom. And then, like I said, October 5th is our start date. I can't break cohorts, but I will definitely be outside peering in on all the campuses to see all the little faces. I'm so excited for staff and for the students and for our families. I mean, families are super excited about having some connection back with school. And, you know, you say you get emotional. I get emotional thinking about... I get emotional thinking about that first day, seeing their little faces on campus and how excited they are. And believe it or not, the students that have reached out to me, the most are our high school students, asking if they can please have an opportunity to come back.
Oh.
That's all for our rolling back onto campus plan. Dr. Stepanowski, I'll kick it to Mr. Cypress.
Couple quick updates to share. Last time that we met with the board, we discussed that we were having COVID-19 testing for our staff members. Wanted to give an update on how many were tested. We had 46 staff tested on September 2nd, all 46 with negative results. Excited to again be rolling out that effort on September 22nd, I believe is the date, next week. Another encouraging thing from that is, we didn't know this when we last updated the board, they also test for the antibodies, which was a surprise to us. But now, moving forward, we know that they'll be doing that again on the 22nd.
I'm booked in.
Nice. Excited to see you there.
I'm booked in, too.
All right.
I will book that, too.
All right, go team.
Then Mrs. Cupple and Mr. Lawrence, we can be in a cohort together when we test negative.
Can we ride the same bus and have the same lula hoops?
No.
You got shut down on that one.
I'm in the afternoon squad, and thank Mr. Cypress for not showing the nasal swab picture.
You got it, no problem. And also wanted to share with special education staff and students coming back to campuses, wanted to share right now an update on, you know, what staff is currently on campus. We do have all of our administrative staff, principals, and assistant principals on campus. We've got teachers who are teaching from their classrooms. We have instructional assistants who are also working out of their spaces on campus. In the front office, we have our clerical folks, our office managers at all 14 sites, as well as health clerks, our media center staff. We got to see Mary Jo this evening, so that team is rocking and rolling on campuses. And of course, our fearless plant managers and custodial staff, who has been rocking all summer long and all throughout the fall, doing a great job in keeping up our grounds and our campuses.
Mr. Klein?
All right, so tech team has settled in a little bit. Things have stabilized finally for us. I would say we've moved from firefighter mode to support mode now with our teams, which we're really thrilled about. And we do have quite a bit of staff development ongoing right now. Now that we have settled in, we're able to spend a lot more time with our teachers, working on new strategies and new tools that they can use in the classroom. We spent quite a good deal of time with our substitutes as well, because being a substitute in this day and age is a totally different thing than it was in the past. You're not going to the classroom and having your lessons plans laid out for you now. You have to actually become a part of that teacher's Google Classroom, and you have to understand Zoom, and you have to know how to become a co-host and all of those kinds of things. There's a lot more requirements and skills needed by our subs to be successful. We put a lot of time into supporting them as well. And we are prepping for the return of students with Angie's group, providing the technology for that, as well as working with the Parent Square team to build up the COVID pre-screening that will be required. You may not be aware, but all of our students or all of our parents will have to check their kids in on a daily basis and report in their health status prior to coming on campus. So we're building those tools.
So there's going to be a health screening for students?
There will be a health screening for students. It will have to be done by parents for students under high school age. Once they get to high school age, then the students themselves will be able to do it. And of course, you know, the thermal scanners and all of those things that we're prepping and playing.
That's great.
Yeah. For the rest, you know, we're still doing device connectivity. We see lots of parents on a daily basis for various needs and taking care of their needs. And we're working with Laco on some new funding that they receive from the Board of Supervisors to see if we can get some more hotspots that won't be on the district's dime in the future, which would be a nice thing. So that's our movement forward.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about what you're seeing from these computers? I'm hearing an awful lot of parent pushback that, it's not that they're not performing, that they're broken, it's that they were just never intended to be a device that was used in this way, and they're simply collapsing under the pressure. Like, parents are saying like, I mean, I'm, I am regularly hearing that the device, I mean, I got a text today, quote, garbage tech was what we used for. Again, not critical of our team for containing them, no one's fault in that they're working, but that these were never meant to be used in this way as the scope, you know, connectivity for education. And so I'm hearing from a lot of parents, a lot of complaints about. Can you maybe shed a little light, and I know it's late, if we can, fine, but just your thoughts on this and kind of as we think about the future, is the current device platform we're using, what's going forward, being able to do now?
Well, to a certain degree, you got to keep in mind that we are using a wide range of devices. So we do have, we are rolling into play a lot of our older devices that we didn't ever intend to extend out this long, which is a little bit challenging. So we do have some slower devices that are out there, and what we're working on is educating our parents on, you know, how to use those devices the most effective way possible, not overload them and not try to do too much all at once. So for example, we've, our finding that a lot of our, you know, TK through two students who have the slowest devices that we have are opening up a lot of Chrome tabs and doing a whole lot of other things on their devices while they're also in their Zoom meetings, which is causing the device to get a little bit overloaded, which is causing some issues there. So we are sending out communications to our parents in that regard to assist with, you know, proper use of the laptops and understanding that they are a limited device. In the long run, you know, as we phase all of those machines out or able to phase in new devices, I think we'll be in much better shape. Our newest devices seem to handle it quite well, but a lot of those older devices are giving us a little bit of trouble.
How many of the older devices are still in rotation?
Right now, I think we have about 2,000.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and we had to roll those out. Those we were intending to phase out, but we ended up having to roll those out to the younger, younger families, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few more updates. We do have, as you noted in our recognition, staff recognition earlier tonight, we have served hundreds, well, over 100,000 meals. And just want to remind families that the application for free and reduced-priced meals is available on our website. You can complete it at any time. And meals are available at any of our middle schools or high schools from 11 o'clock to 12:30 every day. And then additional early bird pickups for meals. Maybe the midday doesn't accommodate a work schedule, so the early bird pickups are available at AC Stell and Lindero Middle Schools from 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning. Ms. Cupple, did you have?
We just go back and just clarify and just punctuate that you don't have to do the free and reduced application in order to get the free meals.
Thank you. That is actually new information as of the last, in, within the last 10 days or so. Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Wasserman. We do still want families to fill it out, though, says Ms. Kimmel under her mask across the room.
And it is possible that, and parents shouldn't be concerned if they do have the need for free and reduced meals and they want to apply for that. It's helpful for them throughout the whole school year, as well as it helps trigger financial resources for the district as well. So it's completely confidential, it's private, and, you know, parents shouldn't be afraid if financial circumstances have changed to go ahead and to apply for that. And online, it's in multiple languages, I believe, right? I know it's in Spanish at least, but I think the documentation's available in multiple languages.
Yes, it is, and thank you for making those points.
So is this the same waiver we had from the summer that did not require us to verify residency, you're a parent in our district, and we were basically feeding anybody who showed up for a meal?
That is correct. We were pleasantly surprised that the USDA, I think it was USDA, extended that through December, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Cupple, through December? Yes.
And is that, is that paying for the, is that paying for the meal and the staff time to make it? Or did I forget, I'm starting to remember what it was over the summer.
I don't think it covers it 100%, but it comes close. And then the next slide is regarding childcare. We just wanted to remind our families and our staff members, of course, that we do have childcare available at various locations and sites, and our community childcare partners have committed to expanding as demand increases. Additionally, we want to make sure that everyone knows that our counseling center is serving students and parents and staff regularly. You can make an appointment at community360.me. We also have our tutoring program that we have recently reactivated and publicized, and so we invite families to go also to community360.me to access that signup system. Dr. Stepanowski, you want to close us out?
Yes, in conclusion, unfortunately, if my phone is on, there's always breaking news. And so, Keneho and Moore Park are planning to open October 5th. Moore Park for instruction for TK to 5, Keneho TK to 6. So while it, it looks like we are being bold with our students with special needs on October 5th, and we are, neighboring districts are, because of their metrics in their county, looking at something different. So unfortunately, it's confusing for our parents to contemplate private schools that are open. It's going to be a little more confusing now with a bunch of our neighbors that are open as well, if they continue forward and are approved by the county.
Wow, we're going to be surrounded by schools open.
More to come.
So is this it? That's it?
Poor Noah, he needs to go to bed. He's got school in the morning.
Okay, so with that, we will.
Thank you, Noah.
We, before I adjourn, I just want to say that we will continue this item indefinitely on the agenda, and our next meeting is in three weeks, and it'll be fun to see the changes in three weeks. And if you can bring us an update on our wonderful special ed students that'll be on campus, that would be great as well. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.